You're watching GCTV. Community Access Table Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122 or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
38 PM. Today is Wednesday, June 12th, 2019. Thank you everyone for your patience. I made a wrong turn in Boston and ate up about 30 minutes of buffer time. So, I appreciate that. Member Karen said that she will be here as soon as she can. She had a bit of an emergency to attend to. Could we have a roll call please?
Mayor Martin.
Yeah.
Member Johnson.
Here.
Member Hollins.
Here.
And myself, Member Exrem.
Thank you very much. And just a couple of things from the opening language that I forgot. We are at the Johns-on Center at 35 Pleasant Street in Greenfield. We are being recorded and broadcast live by GCTV. If there are any other members of the public that are recording, please tell me now. Okay, seeing no one, we'll just move on with the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review minutes from May 12th, 2019? Related to the minutes, I had one point that I wanted to clarify that I noticed today when I was reviewing, and I didn't have a chance to review our video footage to double check the language. And that item is related to appointing school committee members to the SIC bank committee. The word potential is, this is on page three, says A N accepted potential appointment of GJ and KC to represent school committee on SIC leave bank committee. And I don't necessarily recall using the word potential, and I, as I mentioned, I haven't had a chance to review that. Member Hollins?
Before we start the session.
Sure.
I'll move to accept the minutes of Wednesday, May 8th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So my point around that still stands. Any discussion, any other discussion? Yes, Member Hollins?
On page three. It starts, at the bottom of page two, it's talking about the recommendation to the city council to raise the FY '20 school budget. And on the top of page three, I spoke to this, the way the minutes read, it says use stabilization funds. So, as you know, I don't support that. So I did check with the secretary on her backup notes. What I said was, there are six or seven options for additional funding other than raising taxes. And I went on to talk about the use of city stabilization funds. And I'd like the minutes corrected.
Can you be more specific?
I'd like the minutes to say...
Sure, sure.
Susan Hollins offered options to increase funding other than levying and raising taxes, including city stabilization funds.
Could you read it one more time?
Offered options to increase funding other than levying and raising taxes, including city stabilization funds.
Okay.
To increase the school funding, but not the student.
Okay, and that feels like a fair reflection, Susan?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to point out that it's not accurate. We weren't trying to adjust the levy limit. We were nowhere near the levy limit. So, I mean, it might be accurate to her what she said, but...
What I didn't say was let's use stable, district stabilization funds. I just want the record to correct that.
Is...
Did it say use city stabilization funds? Or it'll say that...
Use city stabilization funds, is that... I mean, I wanted to reflect what you think is accurate of what you said, so...
I was talking about, which I think is important, options that we had for more money. And I specifically said there are six or seven other options.
Yes, Member Exrem?
So can we just insert city between use and stabilization?
Sure. Okay, so... And then I'll go back to my request to remove the word potential from page three. The bottom of the page, A N accepted appointment of GJ and KC to represent school committee on SIC bank, SIC leave bank committee. Is there further deliberation or discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. And, public comment. Are there any of the members of the public that are here to comment today? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to reports. Student representatives. Oh yes, please. Perfect. And you might need to move it closer to you, just to make sure everyone can hear. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome. My name's Gabe LaRouche.
My name's Hannah Poyer.
All right, we might as well just start off with the fun stuff, sports.
Yeah.
Boys tennis was 11 and 4 on the season and lost in the semifinals to Belchertown. Girls tennis went 10 and 1 on the season and lost in the quarterfinals to Mount Graylock. Baseball was 16 and 6 and lost in the quarterfinals to Southwick. And softball lost 6 and 4 to Akona in the quarterfinals. Boys track and field finished 5 and 2 while the girls' track and field team finished 1 and 2. Each team sent one athlete to states, which is actually really incredible. I'll move on to academics now. Tomorrow afternoon is the all-school awards assembly around the 1:30 when period six begins. Finals begin on Friday and end Tuesday on the last day of school. Friday through Tuesday are half-days. All right, time for clubs. Spectrum, they attended the Northampton Pride a couple of weeks ago and are now attending the Greenfield Pride this weekend. Environmental Science Club attended a Green and Greenfield convention called Drawdown at the library, where students broke up into groups and talked about items of interest to them. National Honor Society attended the Relay for Life this past weekend and they held their officer elections. The Future Business Leaders of America Club had their end-of-season party last week, which was pretty fun. Green Room had a particularly successful year, mainly their cooking club actually grew the most. This summer, they are running their Greenfield Outdoor Adventure Leadership Club and Gamesmithing, another one of their more successful clubs. Student Council recently made and set up luminaries at the Relay for Life just this past weekend and held their officer elections, as well as their inter-class officer elections. French Club is having snacks and a movie, 5:30 actually right now. And yeah, that's all I have.
Super.
Are we excused to go to the snacks and the movie?
Sounds like fun. Could you tell me your name one more time?
I'm Gabe LaRouche.
And you're Hannah, is that right? Super. Folks, are there any questions or comments for the student representatives?
That's great report.
Okay, yeah, great report. Yes, Member Johnson?
I just want to say, I had a chance to attend that drawdown event and the presence of the youth there was so strong and the advisor was clearly great at mobilizing people and getting them into leadership. So we broke into subgroups where we identified next steps to try to cooperate on a larger scale to make Greenfield more part of the climate change movement. And it was great to have the youth leadership. I appreciate, especially appreciate the young people and the advisor who were there that night.
Yeah, I can speak for all of us when we say that that was a very enlightening experience.
Super. All right, thanks very much for coming. Happy summer.
Yes.
Okay, I guess it's my report time.
No?
Nope.
One more?
Yeah, please come on. Yay, super.
Good evening. My name is Kim Hurley, and along with Nicole Slawinski, we're the two Title I reading specialists at Greenfield Middle School. We are here this evening to share one of our community service learning opportunities that we have at Greenfield Middle School. We will also share through two student narratives, as well as our culminating a field trip to Amherst College that we have on display over there. So this experience is coordinated with Reader to Reader, which is a public charity that works with bringing books to under-resourced school libraries across the United States. Read Think Share, located at Amherst College, is a mentoring program within Reader to Reader, paid for by our Title I, that matches each student to a college mentor that joins this CSL. Together, they read the same book at the student's pace and use a special, really cool forum to share and discuss the book together online. The students receive positive feedback and academic support from a strong role model and hopefully it promotes a stronger interest in reading for pleasure. Now, we have Riley Mitchell, one of our fifth graders who was in this CSL, who's going to share her and a classmate's experience about Read Think Share.
Read Think Share CSL. My experience with Read Think Share was awesome. I had a great time communicating with my buddy. Read Think Share encouraged me to pick up and read, pick up a book and read. Before Read Think Share, I'd never just pick up a book and read. It's the best time of the day where you get to pick up a book and read for a little while, then you get on a callbook and write about the book you are reading together on the forum. I got really excited when my buddy responded to me on the forum. Here is something really nice, they read at your own pace, so they are not way ahead of you or way behind you. The field trip to Read Think Share in Amherst College was also a great experience. We got to learn about different extinct animals, including dinosaurs. We also got to learn about different buildings on campus, how old they are and what they are used for. The dining hall was very nice. They had many different food options, including a whole bunch of sides, drinks, and even desserts. It was amazing. We got to learn that there were dinosaur tracks discovered in Greenfield. They showed us dinosaur footprints in the sidewalk tiles. That was my awesome experience in Read Think Share. This is Christian Yagavani. Unfortunately, he was not able to attend today. Dear Greenfield School Committee, I had a lot of fun this year, partly because of one of the great and fun CSL choices I made this year. One of these great choices was Reader to Reader. Even though I did not have a college buddy for a while, I still had a lot of fun. When I did finally get a buddy, though, I really loved it. Having a college buddy to talk to made me smile cheek to cheek. It gave me some, someone to talk to. Also, the college buddies would not judge me no matter what I said. I also loved waiting for a response. It was so fun just to think of what they might say. Overall, Reading Buddy CSL was really fun and I feel tremendous about amount of gratitude for the entire Reader to Reader staff and Ms. Slawinski. Thank you for listening, and although I could not be here to say in person to say this, the school year was very fun. Thankfully, Christian Yagavani.
Would it be okay to leave our display up for a little while?
That would be great. I was actually going to ask if you could, so that I could take a look at it afterwards. Are there any questions or comments? I see Member Exrem and then Member Hollins?
Mr. Hurley, you're a reading teacher at the middle school? I just wanted to thank you because you must have a role organizing this program and it's a lot of coordination when you're hooking up every student with somebody in a college. So I wanted to thank you and I wanted to thank this student. I am glad you learned to be a pleasure reader and we had this program to offer you. Thanks for coming.
Member Exrem?
I just wanted to share that our youngest, Sam, our youngest comma Sam comma, really enjoyed this program as well, and he too was impressed with cafeteria.
College.
Yeah.
Superintendent? So I was wondering if while you're here, you could also speak to the summer reading program that's coming up because it is, the school committee members actually have some of these photos from the visit to Amherst College in your package, and I was going to highlight these specifically. The dinosaur tracks from Greenfield are really cool, and this Reader to Reader program has been a really great collaboration. But I'm wondering if while you're here, you would speak a little bit about the program that's launching for this summer.
Okay. So Mrs. Slawinski and I, for the third year this summer, will be participating in a summer lending library through Oak Courts. So two times in July and two times in August, it's really every two weeks. We have books that we bring there and we set it up coordinated during the lunchtime so we can have students gathering where we have read alouds, and we offer students books at all ages to read to help keep them going throughout the summer. We offer drawing and little activities, and then of course, at the end, there's a culmination where we have fruit and sherbet, and we give free books to the students just to help encourage them.
Fantastic. Yes, Member Exrem?
Do you need any books? Do you need any books?
He always loved books.
All right. They'll be coming for you.
Okay. Did you hear that, Greenfield and beyond? Any books, send her away. Thank you so much for coming. This is really great. It's wonderful to hear about this program and I'm glad that you've had a really good experience and so have your friends. So thanks a lot for coming out on a Wednesday night. Yay. Okay. So now I think it's time for the chairperson report. Thanks a lot. I just want to start off by, again, just reiterating, apologizing for being late today and also for kind of being a little quick to the start here, Susan. I'm sorry. I hope I didn't start off on the wrong tone related to the minutes, so, okay. Related to, okay, so in my, I didn't draft a particular address for you all, but I do want to say that it was a real honor to represent the school committee at the Greenfield High School graduation ceremony, and there were multiple school committee members present, and that was really lovely to have them in the audience. And this event, this is the second time that I've had the opportunity to represent the school committee onstage, and I just want you all to know that it really means a lot to me. And I want to say congratulations to all of our graduates. It was a wonderful ceremony. Mayor Martin was sitting next to me. And I wish all of our graduates the best in the next chapter in their lives. As well, there were several members that attended the trout release from the middle school at the Green River Swimming Pool, and that was also a really fantastic event. I wasn't able to attend last year. I'm so glad that my schedule allowed me to attend this year, and it was wonderful to see multiple school committee members there, also to celebrate the release of the trout into the Green River. I did follow up with the superintendent related to a motion that was placed a few months ago, the costs for utilizing the Johns-on space. I just wanted to quickly update the committee. The superintendent indicated that currently there are only additional charges if there is overtime necessary for setting up the space. So as it is right now, it seems to be a cost-neutral place for us to have our meetings. Is that accurate, Superintendent? Okay, thank you. As well, a quick update on the Green River School Building. The mayor has indicated that a financial order is going to the council for the installation of a heater at the Green River School Building. And there is a proposed timeline for a fall 2021 opening of the Green River School Building. If there's any additional information related to that, I will certainly bring it to the table. 2021, yes. Fall 2021, is that accurate? Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Member Hollins?
Is there any interest in looking at options for programs at the building? The reason I'm mentioning that is, for other reasons, I've been studying what's going on in Massachusetts and the US in terms of new grant programs. And there are, even if the program going into the school continues with the current thought, if it's organized as a Horace Mann charter school, there's a $500,000, three-year startup grant, and it's the, district-sponsored charter schools is really rare. Massachusetts has that provision because they were one of the early states to adopt a charter school law, and then they had to change it around. But it's a really interesting model, and it comes with a lot of startup funding, so I don't know if there's any interest other than mine in looking at models for using the empty school and new programs. I'd be interested if anyone else...
Thanks, Member Hollins. Let's stick to the agenda. There's a lot on the agenda today. And I just want to say before moving on that we did take a vote to end our meetings at 10:00 PM. I will try to hold us to that, and with that in mind, I'll be looking at the clock, maybe around 9:00 PM. We may need to table what we have left. We do have a little bit of executive session business that we need to attend to, so please keep that in mind. That's all I have for you. Superintendent?
I will be brief with my reports because we have a lengthy agenda. We are nearing the end of the school year, and it is a busy and exciting time in our schools. We had Field Day at some of our schools today. Four Corners had Field Day Monday. We have Field Day at Federal Street and Newton School. We had some rain this week, so some of those got moved around. We have had 19 field trips in transportation. Those field trips have been done in-house with our transportation crew and our fleet of vehicles. They are out and about. You may have seen them. They look good, they're safe, and they're saving us money every day, so we're really excited about that. The last day of school at the Academy of Early Learning is tomorrow. It is an early dismissal at the Academy of Early Learning, and next Tuesday is the last day of school for all of our students. It's also an early dismissal. So as we head into these last few days of school, we are wishing our students and families a wonderful summer. We are launching our Title I Summer School Program, our Extended School Year Program, and our Summer Meals Program with a number of summer meals location throughout the community. We are also hosting raffles at a number of those sites to encourage participation. As a reminder, youth eat free in Greenfield. If you're 18 and under at those meal sites, you can eat for free, and we encourage folks to do that. We know that for many young people in Greenfield, the reliability of the school nutrition program is extremely important to them, and so we make that available over the summer as well. The Superintendent's Health Education Task Course has had several meetings. Those have been extraordinarily productive. We have school committee representatives, special education parent representatives, school nurse and school nurse leader representatives, school physician, teachers, special ed teachers, ELL teachers, parents, who am I missing? It's a great group, a lot of community members and folks who are experts in this area. And we've so far looked at curriculums for students with disabilities that support a comprehensive health curriculum, and will be moving into making recommendations for middle school health curriculum for all middle school students. There is a behavioral health task force that the Director of Pupils Services is leading up with some grant funds, and that has launched and is well underway. They met again today, and we're looking there at supporting our students in our schools using those funds to begin deepening the work we do in the partnerships with mental health agencies like CSO in our community. And I think I'll leave it there for today unless there are specific questions. As always, your financial report is in the packet, and I think many of the things will come up in the agenda throughout the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any questions for the Superintendent? Are there any questions related to the financial reports? Okay, seeing none, we will move right along. Subcommittees. I'm not sure that any of our subcommittees actually met since our last meeting. Did Health and Safety? Okay. And I think Policy, I'm not sure if it was in between the meetings or not, but we do have another policy meeting that's scheduled for the end of the month. I think it's June 24th. So I don't think there's anything to report from Subcommittee. Okay. School Committee Representatives. Member Exrem, would you like to report on the collaborative?
Yes, we had a meeting, oh gosh, I guess it was two weeks, two weeks ago now, and spent some time talking about the budget for the collaborative. And their finances are run very differently from the school district finances, which was interesting for me because with my background, I, in bookkeeping rather than school funding, it was very easy for me to follow along, but all the other people in the room seemed to be lost, which was kind of entertaining for me at least. And they're just talking, we were talking about some new initiatives that we're thinking of making. Aside of that, that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Member Exrem? Okay, and Member Hollins? Did Planning and Construction mute?
I wasn't at the meeting. I think they did mute. Actually, they combined their meeting with the city task force on looking at the Citibank downtown, and that was their meeting this month.
Thanks, Member Hollins. Thanks, Member Hollins.
And I was there.
You were there?
I was there. I had to think about it because it was not at the regularly scheduled time. There's a second committee that the mayor established looking at the bank building downtown, and they combined with Planning and Construction.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll see about...
And I think they had another meeting following that.
Okay. And I will check in on some minutes from those, or if, Member Hollins, if you are able to get minutes from the meetings, that's very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Superintendent?
I think you said Citibank, but you don't mean Citibank. You mean a bank.
I don't mean Citibank. There's a bank building downtown.
Talking about the Pushkin?
It's...
Not that?
It's not the...
First National?
The First National Bank, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The city's bank building.
Thank you.
First National. Thank you.
Any other questions for Member Hollins? Okay. So let's jump right into our business. Believe it or not, we're ahead of schedule. Okay, so this is a proclamation in support of LGBTQIA Pride and Civil Rights Month. This was brought to our attention from Ms. Sarah Ahern, who is a resident here in Greenfield. She is also here, just in case we have any questions or anything for her. And then this was supported then by Member Johnson. So in the body of the email is the proclamation. It starts in the second paragraph with, "We, the Greenfield School Committee, hereby issue this proclamation in support of LGBTQIA Pride and Civil Rights Month in the month of June and year of 2019. We believe at a time when the nation is trying to roll back protections from discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity, we need to step up and lead the way forward. We believe that everyone deserves the opportunity to love who they love, find and keep a job in a safe environment, and enjoy the same everyday freedoms as every American regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity and expression. We also believe that all members of our community, especially our youth, deserve to feel and be safe from violence, harassment, and exploitation of any nature. We believe this proclamation will show our residents and neighbors that the city of Greenfield is a leader in embracing diversity and is tolerant and inclusive for all people who live and work in our community. This proclamation respectfully submitted for your consideration at this month's June School Committee meeting." Is there a motion to support the proclamation? Moved by Member Ekstrom. And is there a second?
Second?
Second by Member Johnson. Any discussion? Yes, Superintendent?
I just want to add some context to this by saying that we've had a Spectrum Club at the Greenfield High School for a number of years, and in recent years, we have added a Gay-Straight Alliance at the middle school largely by request of students. And of course, we have a broad diversity of families that attend and participate in the Greenfield Public Schools, and I think that it would be appropriate for the school committee to issue a proclamation like this that really makes clear that this is a bigot-free and supportive environment for young people and for their families.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any, Member Hollins?
Well, I agree with every single comment in the proclamation. So I have two comments. One is, I checked to see how many other months there are of importance, like Black... There are dozens. And if we start making proclamations, do we have to make lots of proclamations for every important topic on civil rights or identity or anything, school safety? I would rather address this instead of a proclamation with an action that benefits our students. And that's my second comment. I've brought up several times the Safe Schools Program for LGBTQ students, which was passed by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Ed in 2015. It has a bunch of provisions of the recommendations to schools other than, in addition to what we're doing now. So that's my thought, is that we should be action-oriented toward our schools instead of making proclamations, because I worry that there are so many other important issues. Will we be making proclamations all the time?
Member Johnson?
I'd like to thank Ms. Ahern for bringing this to our attention. Young people have higher rates of suicidality, of teen pregnancy, of STD infections, of substance abuse issues, all of which work against their student achievement, which our school committee is committed to. So I think it's very important that we send messages. I think action is also important, but having been a gay man in public high schools, I can tell you that we are listening. Young people are listening to us in what we do and don't do, and our words do matter and are in action in and of themselves. So I'm supportive of this proclamation. I had, you know, it was on sort of a tight timeline, and I had, I hadn't exactly, I had wanted this on the agenda to have a proclamation and had drafted something a little different, but I'm very supportive of this as it is, and urge other people to vote for it. And yes, we should then see this as a statement of our values and be looking for ways to support the schools, to make sure that everyone can thrive in our school system regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression.
Thanks, Member Johnson. Did you want to offer an amendment to the proclamation at all?
No, I think, I think it's better just to leave it as is, as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Martin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know where the legal advice came from, but there's no, no authority for the school committee or the city council to offer proclamations. You can offer resolutions according to the charter. So I would say that this title in the beginning be changed to a resolution instead of a proclamation. The city council will be converting their title proclamation to a resolution for the same purpose. But let me say that Greenfield is a safe community, a welcoming community. We have, we have quite a few public and external demonstrative displays of our openness, of our inviting everyone into town, into our little city. I think actions by frontline leaders is more critically impressive and role modeling for younger people than to have committee edicts. I'm not opposed to the resolution of such a leadership role so that the frontline leaders can know where their committee members stand on certain issues. I know I've been around a long time, but even the, I don't, the LGBTQIA, I know most of the letters and what words they mean, and I know most of the words, but I don't know all of the meanings. So can we have that explained instead of really putting a resolution forward on a, on a acronym? Can we have it explained?
Sure. I see Member Johnson's hand.
Why don't I add an amendment to spell it out first? So in support of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual pride and civil rights. And then if we need to say LGBTQIA later, we can use that as an acronym.
Oh, Mayor Martin, did you have more?
Yeah, just to follow up, I guess the...
Point of order. I think I may not have stated it correctly. I was trying to make a motion to amend the...
Yeah, thank you. So, Member Johnson, I believe that...
Then I would have the floor, and then I would ask Member Johnson through the chair to explain the...
Yes, okay, great.
LGBTQIA.
Okay.
And then, and then I'll make a motion, and then Member Johnson can make a motion after that.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, though.
amend the motion.
Amendment, okay.
So I think I got the, I got the acronyms to explain that, but I'm not certain what the last two are. The IA.
Sure. Intersex refers to people whose genitalia don't match the binary of male or female. They may have components of either or both. And A refers to asexual, people who do, who do not experience sexual or romantic attraction towards one or the other gender at all. That's my non-technical definition of the, of the, of the community.
Thank you. So I would move to amend the motion as put forward to replace proclamation with resolution.
Do you accept that amendment? I'll leave you formally moved it. Okay?
Thank you. I yield.
And, Member Johnson, I believe that you wanted to put forward an amendment to write out everything. Is that accurate?
Yes, would you accept that amendment, Member Ekstrom?
I'm sorry.
Would you accept the amendment to spell out?
Yes.
Yeah.
Superintendent?
I almost brought a handout with the exact description of each of these for the committee in anticipation of this, but I've also seen the A stand for ally, so, and the T sometimes has a dual role as transgender, transsexual. At any rate, I think as inclusive as possible a understanding of this term is helpful.
Yes, Member Hollins.
And a comment and a suggested amendment. In the state guidelines, the Q also stands for questioning students that aren't sure they're thinking about their gender identity. And my comment is, would anyone, would the motion maker accept an amendment to add to the motion? And over the summer, the school committee will review the Department of Education principles for ensuring safe and supportive learning environments for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning students.
Member Ekstrom, that was for you. I think that there can easily be a second motion to separate it from the resolution. That's helpful.
Yeah, I just, I don't have an issue with, with any of those, frankly. I don't know that those two pieces should travel together, I guess is what I'm saying. So yes, I agree with, so, no, I would not accept the friendly amendment, but not because I have an issue with it, just I don't think they should travel together.
Member Johnson?
Just that, I think that that second item would need to be on a future meeting agenda to be in accordance with open meeting law, so people know we're going to be deliberating on it before we have it on an agenda and discuss it.
Thank you, Member Johnson. Okay, so there's a motion on the table. We will change the word proclamation to resolution, and we will list out LGBTQIA. Any further discussion? Yes?
Well, we have made motions on items from reports that are being given by the chair and items that come up, and I think this is pertinent to the topic, so...
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. We're talking about the motion that's on the table right now. Is everyone ready to vote on that? Before we do, I'll just say that I wholeheartedly support this. I think that even in putting forward a resolution, that is in action. And I very much appreciate Member Johnson speaking very clearly to some of the challenges that our students may be facing and youth in our community and beyond. And I think that putting forward a resolution, a statement like this, is incredibly powerful, and I actually would be fine and invite additional resolutions that are proclaiming our position on additional issues that may come forward, just to speak to the worry that there may be a need for more resolutions. I think that's fine. I think that's powerful. Okay. Yes, Mayor Martin?
I'm inclined to agree with Member Hollins on, on her amendment that it's part of this, an integral part of this topic, and that if we're to lead with this type of resolution, we should also show what we're going to do to make sure that it gets spread throughout the system. And to do that, we would have to comply with whatever is coming down from DESI or other state agencies.
Superintendent?
I fully support action on this item. I just think that we don't have the people at the table tonight to advise appropriately on this, and if there's a directive to ask the superintendent to put together a team of folks in our schools, some of this work is happening right now in the Behavioral Health Task Force, some of this is happening right now on the Superintendent's Health Education Advisory Committee. We'd be happy to combine those resources, make some recommendations, and come back to this committee, but I'm a little wary of on the floor tonight without advice from the folks that are doing this work every day with our students to try to come up with something now. I fully support both the resolution and action happening, and I don't feel that they need to be tied to this motion in order for us to continue taking the action that we are to support all of our students.
Yes, Member Hollins.
I just wanted to say that the motion I made is that we would review the document. It wasn't that the superintendent...
So I just want to clarify, actually, that we have a motion on the table. Member Ekstrom did not accept your amendment. So let's go forward with voting on this particular motion unless there's further deliberation on this particular motion. Mayor Martin?
Just say that I can't support the resolution without having some type of action associated with it directly.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One opposed. No abstentions, the motion passes. Thank you, Sarah, for bringing this to our attention. And did you have a follow-up motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that over the summer, the school committee review the 2015 Department of Education Guidelines called Safe Schools for LGBTQ Students, Principles for Ensuring Safe and Supportive Learning Environments for Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, and Questioning Students. Some of these suggestions are simple, like have a designated person in each school. They're very interesting. I don't think we've ever reviewed it. Thank you. I don't know if anyone would second the motion.
Member Johnson?
I object to consideration of the motion on the basis that it's not on the agenda and is, would, in my view or my judgment, be a violation of open meeting law for us to deliberate on a topic that was not notified to the public in advance of this meeting? It's a great topic. Let's put it on a future agenda item.
Mayor Martin?
Is that a motion? Member Hollins?
I made a motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, and it's my understanding that the motion can be made. I appreciate what you're saying, Member Johnson. And I agree with Member Johnson's position in that I think that we should add this to an upcoming agenda. I think that that's at the heart of what you're asking for. So I think that we should consider a review and add it to an upcoming agenda and then go from there before we add any strict timelines or guidance.
That was the motion. To review it.
Susan Feber, could you read it back to us, please?
I don't have the full title of the meeting document.
I know.
But that over the summer, the school committee reviewed the 2015 Department of Education Guidelines called Safe Schools... guidelines called Safe Schools for LGBTQ Students.
Did you have a comment?
I was just wondering if there's a motion, I believe, on the floor, and I believe it's been seconded.
It has.
I just had an audio problem, so thank you for fixing the mics. But I was also wondering if it might be more appropriate to refer to subcommittee for a recommendation before the full committee, so, because that's how most actions come before this committee.
Member Hollins?
I'm just asking the school committee to know about this document. It would take us five minutes to review it and look at what the state's recommending, and then if there's a need to review it to a committee for something, fine, but this is a document for school committees to review, that's why the board voted it.
Thanks, Ian. I appreciate everyone's patience with me right now. I would like to hear the motion one more time, please.
That over the summer, the school committee reviewed the 2015 Department of Education guidelines called Safe Schools for LGBTQ Students. There's more to the title.
I see Mayor Martin, and then I see the superintendent, and then I see Member Johnson.
So I might suggest that, since the superintendent knows about this guideline, that we direct the superintendent to review it, bring it with their recommendations at the next meeting of the school committee, so that we can all understand what the guidelines are for a safe school.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, and I see the superintendent.
Well, I understood the motion to be to review it as in to make the committee aware of it. It's my understanding that sending out a currently public document to the public body with no deliberation is not a violation of the open meeting law, so I might suggest that in addition to whatever actions taken place, that Member Hollins or any other member of the public body, or myself, could send that document, as long as there's no deliberation, that document can be distributed immediately.
Thank you, Superintendent, and Member Johnson.
My thought was similar, that if school committee members want to encourage other school committee members to read things, they can send us the link. It's not, but it's not necessarily necessary to make it into a big process dispute here. I don't know what we're, I'm not sure what, where we are on the agenda. I saw on the agenda Pride Month proclamation, we acted on that, and I'd like to move on.
Thank you, Member Johnson.
My last comment. We just spent all this time, because this is such an important topic. Since I've been on the school committee, we have never once looked at what the state board is recommending to school committees, and I've made a motion that we review it as a body. And let's call the question.
Okay, is that a motion or call the question, or can we just? I don't think there's any further deliberation, right? Okay. All those in favor of reviewing the state's Safe Schools information sometime over the summer? Say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Member Johnson abstains, motion carries, so we'll take a look at it. Okay, thank you. We were still on schedule. So we did have a new item, the Special Education Transportation Purchase. This was a, an urgent item that was added yesterday. It came to the attention of the superintendent yesterday, and it was added on to the agenda because it is urgent. The information is in your packet. Looks like this. I will yield the floor to the superintendent to explain what's going on with this.
I'm going to invite the business manager and transportation coordinator up. And if there isn't available mic, maybe Steve, you can grab the available mic from Member Karen, so that you can use that.
Super. And don't forget to press the button. Thank you.
Okay, well, we were planning on waiting a little bit, but we did have a little bit of a problem with one of our big yellow 14-passenger buses. While we were transporting some kids, the brakes failed. Luckily, the driver, who has tremendous amount of experience, was able to bring it safely to a stop, were able to get the kids off-board. Hence our request today. What we'd like to do is to finance three additional Honda minivans. That'll give us one additional capacity for 15 kids, not 14 kids. It'll give us the flexibility of doing longer-distance runs as we need to. The good thing about this is that we've already secured funding, or secured students through Gil Montague for this summer and next year, which will bring in about $65,000, which will is more than double what it costs in order to go ahead and finance this over three years. Our lease price, our finance price is $9.95 per van per month, so we'd like to go ahead and do that. The original plan was to bring you a comprehensive plan going forward, but given the need right now, we'd like to go ahead and ask you to consider this right now, and if you have anything to add regarding the safety and whatever you think is pertinent.
Okay. I don't want to put any more time on the agenda than I have to, but we looked at the aging of the fleet, and there's no such thing with our fleet, it's past aging. We've been warned, and to accomplish what we have so far in the district, we've pushed every piece of equipment we've had to its max, now we're starting to see the failures that we were told were going to happen. These buses, the one that lost the brakes, it's probably going to happen again, I can't guarantee it won't. We were lucky all the way around. One of the other buses, same thing, 14-passenger, had to go in for a repair, and when I went in and looked at it, I don't mean to laugh, everything underneath it was on the floor because the rust is so bad, they had to do the repairs right then and there, it couldn't just be a patch and carry. So we're fighting this, and we're fighting it in such a way that we know what we can replace it with. These vans, just a reminder, are seven years of maintenance through Honda, and that's everything, tires, rims, key fobs, everything, oil changes, so it puts us in a whole different light for these vehicles in the future. The vans we have now on a daily basis are questionable. We're keeping them repaired, because as soon as the light goes on, or something doesn't look right, we get them right in for a review, but it's being continuous now. So we really need to do this, and like I said, we're watching that fleet every second of the day, the drivers, us in the office, and the DPW are looking at, and they most of the time shake their head when we roll one out after they've repaired it.
Let's start with a motion, and then we can deliberate on this and ask any questions that we have. Is there a motion to approve the request for purchase of three Honda minivans? And a second?
Second.
Second by Member Johnson, moved by Member Ekstrom. I'm seeing Member Hollins' hands, Member Ekstrom, I have a comment. We'll start with Member Hollins.
Will the money coming in from Gil or any other community for school transportation be deposited in our School Transportation Revolving Fund? And will the cost of the lease be posted to the same School Transportation Revolving Fund?
Yes, that is the plan.
So there will be no impact on our school budget?
That is correct.
I have one other question. Schools, today's the June 12th. We only have school for a few more days, so I didn't, I understand the general need to replace the whole fleet. I'm trying to understand the emergency need with school closing in a couple days for all three vans. Thank you.
I'll let Ed take care of that.
We, the school program for summer school, Title I at Newton Street usually is contracted out, we are doing that. What was the savings, Steve, somewhere around?
About $12,000 bucks.
$12,000. And that's what we're doing every day when we can. We have the AEL summer school, we have the high school, and we have 17 out-of-district kids that go all summer. So our fleet and our drivers and even our monitors are going to be busy all summer long getting these kids back and forth safely, and it's a huge expense with what we were able to do even with the old equipment. And there are savings coming in because, such as the 19 field trips they used to be paid for, those were in the budget, those will show up later on as a savings, but not right now. But my department is tracking everything we're doing as far as anything new we're doing, simulating with a cost of the size of a yellow bus, a van, or whatever, so we're actually tracking what we're saving. The other thing that we were able to do in-house with the new equipment and the old is what we refer to as emergency trips, when there's a situation with, it could be a sick child, a parent that needs to come in and doesn't have a ride, we're able to dispatch the vans in between the three-tier trips and go get them, get business taken care of, and then take them back home, and it's helped tremendously across the board, including with kids that had to go home because they were sick, special ed kids that were having problems that we had to make sure got home with their parents, without a disruption of the classes or anything else, and we're very proud of being able to do that, that wasn't done before.
Thank you. Member Ekstrom?
I have a few questions. So this says three-year lease, is it, the lease is you're renting it and then you give it back? Are we purchasing these and making payments over three years?
Did I say lease? Finance, finance.
Okay. So that's completely different.
That's a good question, will we own them?
Yes, we will own them.
We will own them, yes.
And so when we purchased the other three vans, and I actually talked with Ed about this a little bit, when we purchased the other three, we had thought that we would cover our costs with transporting other district students.
Member Ekstrom, can you move your mic a little closer to make sure everyone can hear?
Sorry.
Thanks.
We had talked about the vans' cost being covered by transporting students from other districts, so now we're going to buy an additional three vans, and is it that we have that much interest that these additional three vans will allow us to transport more students than we currently have been?
We do have interest, we have interest with Pioneer Regional also. And the original three band, excuse me, vans were purchased with some capital money, as well as some money out of pocket, about $23,000 out of pocket. So this is 36, so 50-some-odd thousand. Right now, with just Gil Montague alone for next year, we're looking at about $70,000 in revenue, so we're still to the good in that area.
So we'll cover $3,000 a month?
Yes.
Just by virtue of other students from other districts?
Exactly.
If I could just further that. In regard to savings that are not right up front, but we can track, when these vans are running, like the three we have now, the next three, they're all going to be through Honda for seven years at no cost to us, so there's a maintenance budget out there now, and that will be recoverable, so it's real hard for me to say, okay, we saved this money right now, but it's there, and we have to track it and watch it come in, and it will.
And I imagine we're going to save on insurance for vans versus buses?
Just the fuel alone is humongous.
And gas?
The fuel in one of those small buses is maybe three to six miles to a gallon, maybe, okay? The Honda Odysseys that we have already are 22 miles per gallon in town, stop and go, and 31 on highway, so it's not even a comparison anymore.
And do we need to be concerned about hiring additional drivers now that we have additional vehicles?
We have the amount of drivers right now to cover everything we have. The only thing I might have to do is look for maybe two or three monitors to go with those drivers during the summertime.
They're taking vans off the road and replacing them?
Wonderful. That's everything for me, thank you.
Mayor Martin?
Thank you. So you said the savings is real. When will the savings occur?
It's occurring as we speak, because we started to take over all our out-of-district students that were being transported by private contractors for over the last 12 weeks. I haven't...
With what vehicles?
What's that?
With what vehicles?
With the fleet, our aged fleet, that's why we're starting to get into trouble. We used our equipment, made sure it was up to snuff to put it out there, and we've been running those children every day.
So I understand, you purchased three already?
They just got, they just got going within the last couple of weeks.
So they're on the road, the city's insuring them, you went through all that process, so you're using them for transportation?
Yes.
And you can see that there's a savings?
Yes.
You predicted a $250,000 savings for next year, FY '20?
Yes.
So... We took some vehicles off the road.
We haven't taken any off yet.
We haven't taken any off. So I thought those three were going to replace some vehicles?
They just got on the road, so we've been using the other vehicles, now I have to go through the aging fleet one by one and see which ones have to go the quickest out of our way.
All right, then, the, well, let's go back to this first paragraph. To be clear again, you asked for three additional Honda minivans at a three-year lease. You don't mean lease, you mean finance?
Finance, yes.
Okay, so you're financing the vehicles for three years, roughly $1,000 a month, for each or for one?
For each.
For each. So that's about $110,000, $115,000 plus interest.
Over the three years, and that is inclusive of interest?
So at the last meeting, when you wanted the three vehicles, it was exempt from 30B because it was special ed. Are these now special ed vehicles?
These are continued, will continue to be special ed vehicles.
But you're using them during the summer, and you're using them for...
Special ed, yep.
Yep.
So do we have any vehicles for any other students that are not special ed?
Oh, yeah, the yellow buses.
Okay. In your report tonight, you show a $235,985 surplus under transportation. Is that money planned to be used for anything?
That's the end-of-the-year balance?
You've got an encumbrance through the end of the year of $119,000, and showing a balance of a surplus of $235,000. So what's that $235,000 going to be used for?
That'll be, that's an end-of-the-year balance, and what we'll do is continue to monitor that as that floats to the bottom line. There's some other accounts that are in the negative, so that's going to offset those accounts.
So the $1.5 million original budget for transportation is actually $1.2?
As far as I can tell right now, yes.
The money that we're going to receive from Gil Montague, you said you've made an agreement with Gil Montague Schools for Transportation, what are the numbers with that? How many students, how much money, where's the transportation going from, from what site to what site?
Right now, we're working with Gil Montague to transport five of their students to various locations in Holyoke and Springfield, and what we're doing is piggybacking those on our regular students that go there all year round to Springdale Center, and there's another school down there, Neri, Springdale Center and Neri. So when we add a Montague kid to our bus already with three or four kids on it, we're charging them $65 a day. The one student, we're charging $120 a day, that will be for the summer and for next year, and when school starts, we'll be able to pick up a few more kids from Gil Montague that go there but are not part of the summer program. So it'll be roughly around six or seven kids from Gil Montague, and then we're talking with Pioneer Regional of two or three to get to those locations, and it depends on, you know, what we have, if we're going to piggyback and things... And it depends on, you know, what we have, if we're going to piggyback and things like that as to what they cost. But that is a much better deal for them because they were getting charged around $80, $90 a day. So they're saving a little bit of money, and we're making some money off that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Member Johnson?
I just want to thank you so much for doing this work and bringing this all to our attention. And in particular, in addition to this particular request, I'm also hearing, you know, your concern about your fleet. And I just want to say that, I mean, I think probably a lot of us feel this way. In the richest country in the world, like why we cannot have schools funded at a level where we can have transportation for them, where you're not having to have these headaches and, you know, having, just having to worry about these things. It just makes absolutely no sense. I think everybody in the town has done their best to build a budget that could support you as well as it could, but it's clearly not really where we would all want it to be. So let's all keep pressure, putting pressure on our state officials to try to get the funding where it needs to be so we don't have, so our students can just be in buses that are safe.
Mayor Martin?
Just quickly, I think we should all take one eyeball to the sky so we can have a global view of what's going on. Not be too naive about what's happening just in this little corner of the school department. We have vehicles in the Police and Fire Department that are over 100,000 miles, and we have some at the DPW that are a million miles. Let that sink in for a while. So when we talk about financing vehicles in the city, it's all, it's all a matter of finance and priorities and logic. So when you get a high-mileage vehicle, you try to replace it. Safety is number one. Number two is try to make a deal that makes sense, that you can sustain and pay for.
Yeah. Just to add to that, you know, the mayor, as well as everyone else, has been, think outside the box ways to make money on this. And you've all been very clear on that. And I think Ed has done an amazing job here, being able to think outside the box. And unlike the fire, unlike the DPW, we have an opportunity to bring in revenue for our vehicles, which we're taking full advantage of. So it's a good deal all around.
If I might just say this. Everybody, the school committee, the superintendent, Steve, everybody has worked with me and my crew to get us to the point in five or six months that you would normally think it would take two years. So I appreciate everything everybody's done. And what I want to really say about this particular program that we're working on right now, replacing and advancing and bringing students in, is we're making a plan that the other districts can look at, try and copy, or work with us to expand ours. And it's an asset to everybody, so I appreciate it.
Member Holmes?
I also applaud your effort. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to add, "With other district transportation fees and with vehicle leasing costs posted to the School Transportation Revolving Fund" to the motion.
I think, was it moved by you, Member Ekstrom?
It was.
Does that, I think, feel like that's--
What would be the full motion, then? Could you read back what the motion was in the hall?
Nope.
To approve the request for purchase of three Honda minivans.
Okay.
With-- The amendment, which we've done this before when we're specifically putting money in or taking money out of a revolving fund. The amendment was, and that's why I clarified this right away, "With the other district transportation fees and the vehicle leasing cost posted to the School Transportation Revolving Fund." Steve said that was the plan.
Clarify, that's what we're doing.
Legally, we have to do it that way.
Right.
So.
That's nice.
I mean, there wouldn't be any other--
No. If we've taken revenue and--
It has to go in revolving, right?
--the plan is to pay out of that revenue, so it's kind of, you know, six of one, half a dozen of the other type deal.
Okay. So there was a friendly amendment, Member Ekstrom?
It sounds like the amendment isn't necessary.
It's not necessary, but, you know, if you want to be belt and suspenders, go right ahead.
It's only necessary if new people come on board, read the record, want to know what we're doing. That's all.
Okay. So, Member Ekstrom, are you formally accepting or not?
Is that, my only question would be, is that going to handcuff us to something? No, fine.
I mean, no, I don't know. I don't know. My response is that, you know, I was really excited about this. I was about to vote yes and then move on. And what's happened now is muddying of a very simple, essentially, you know, approval of a purchase of a vehicle that I personally think is unnecessary and not, I know that it's part of the proposal to be working with other districts in supporting their needs related to transporting students, but I don't think it needs to be attached to the motion to purchase these vehicles.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Yes. I disagree. I think, I think the fiscal responsibility of the school committee is obvious. If we're going to expend some investment into purchasing vehicles, and there's going to be a revenue stream derived from that, we should direct that revenue stream to an account that we can review at any time and know what's coming in. Anything going out of the account will obviously come through the business manager. So I support this.
And Member Johnson?
I move to call the question as amended.
Okay. There is a motion to call the question. All those, is there a second?
Susan, review.
Yeah, let's, let's vote on the motion to call the question. Is there a second to call the question?
Second.
Second, my member Hollins. There is no debate on call the question, so all those in favor of calling the question? I, that is unanimous. So we will call the question. Ms. Farber, if you could please repeat the full motion to us.
To approve the request for purchase of three Honda minivans with the other district transportation fees and vehicle leasing costs posted to the School Transportation Revolving Fund.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. I saw one of our vans on the highway. I was so proud. I really wanted to snap a photo, but I chose not to.
I might get to it, Susan. My husband sent me, "So who's this new service that's coming? They got all these new vans." It's us!
It's Greenfield Public Schools. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So moving on to role of subcommittees. So in your packet, there's a couple of notes from me right here, role of subcommittees. And it kind of blends into subcommittee assignments and recommendations related to subcommittees. So I feel like we do have tension on our committee, and I think that one of the ways to address some of the tension on our committee is to become more formal. And that's why there's roles of procedure. That's why there are certain roles and essentially process to help us along. And I think that it's been a little foggy as to the role of the subcommittees. And I wanted to put this forward as a reminder to everyone that our subcommittees work to support the work of the full body. And we've been doing this. We've been doing this pretty well, in some instances, not so well. So I felt the need that we needed to bring this forward just as, as a simple reminder to everyone. In general, we've been, we've really gotten into the habit of referring particular topics to the subcommittee, and the subcommittees have taken them up for discussion and brought back any recommendations to the full committee. The budget subcommittee has taken on additional discussion load that was not necessarily put forward by the full committee and at times was not a priority for the committee. And so this is part of why I brought this forward today. So I'll just read what I have here. As a reminder, the role of the subcommittee is to support the work of the full committee. The subcommittees do this by taking up deliberation on topics the committee directly refers to them in order to offer a recommendation to the full committee. If there is no charge to the subcommittee, there is really no need for the subcommittee to even meet. This process is formal and transparent. It builds trust amongst members, and it keeps the committee and the administration from taking on unnecessary work. So I think that, you know, it's very important to underline this. I think that part of this is really building trust and keeping trust amongst the membership, ensuring that we're all aware of what topics are going to subcommittee, what's being discussed, and also making sure that there is not unnecessary work that is being placed upon our administrators or beyond, or even our school committee members. We all have obviously an interest in serving. We also have limited time. So I think it's really important for us to stay very focused in our work. So what I'm asking for today is a motion and support and recognition of the role of the subcommittee as a body that supports the work of the full committee and takes action, takes up deliberation on topics that the full committee requests deliberation
Member Hollins?
Chairman Nunez, I think your definition of a standing subcommittee is inaccurate. I don't mean to be adversarial. But a standing subcommittee is a subcommittee with a broad charge that doesn't wait for the school committee to give it an assignment. It takes on the topic. The Standing Subcommittee on School Safety would consider issues of school safety, not wait for someone to say specifically, "Look at this." I don't think you'd find any budget subcommittees in the state or even look at Ways and Means that waits for the city council to say, "Would you take a look at this?" in order to meet. People meet generally on any topic that comes up. If you talk to the School Committee Association, the Business Managers Association, their comment is, "There's no question any school committee member, subcommittee, budget subcommittee could ask," which is out of line because the responsibility for budget is so great. Our committee didn't have tension among itself, although we disagreed. We always got to something. But the idea that a budget subcommittee, our policy calls for standing subcommittees in broad areas and then special task force subcommittees, which are also public bodies. So I think the way you describe a standing subcommittee is not correct. That budget subcommittee, that policy subcommittee, maybe there is a charge from the school committee, a specific one, and that happens all the time. But otherwise, that committee, particularly budget, just reviews whatever they think is important about the budget as work for the whole school committee. So I don't think the definition of standing subcommittee is correct, particularly for budget.
I see Member Karen.
So I wanted to back up a little bit. Sort of how this whole conversation started was in policy. We were discussing the role of subcommittees, and I was not quite exactly clear how we decided what to deliberate on. So I asked the MASC. And that's how this conversation started. I want to be clear, it was not a role of our chair or anybody to purposefully set aside anybody and say, "You're doing it wrong." That's not what started this conversation. I don't want anybody to think that there, there seems to be this notion that people are being attacked, and that's not actually what's happening. So when the MASC answered, they said, "The opinion of the MASC is that a group should not be deliberating on topics that the full committee has not decided to be valuable for two reasons. One, that's a lot of time wasted for a full committee to then do nothing with. Two, our administrators are consistently having to pull information, show up for meetings, do work for us, and we're overloading them as it is, and then we've asked them for charges." So I don't think that Adrian has the wrong definition of this. I think this is the recommendation the MASC gave to us in policy. As a group, we decided that it made sense. So now we're talking and asking for a motion of support. The reality is, the unfortunate reality is, the budget subcommittee does have a broader topic, and it is harder for you to be charged with a specific thing. But because of that, you're also asking our administrators for more work than any of the other committees are. And consistently, that is harder for them, for Steve, for Jordana, for anybody who has to bring in information. So I think that is part of the problem at this. And calling meetings with exactly 48 hours and five minutes notice for any of the committees is not a good idea because we're not giving them enough time to give us the information. And that's why the charge is important. When we charge you, say, policy with a thing, Jordana knows about that for three weeks before the meeting. But if we don't charge the subcommittee with something, and then they call a meeting 48 hours in advance, they have no idea what to expect. So this makes everybody's job a little easier.
Mayor Aaron?
I guess I completely disagree. The idea that the very complicated budget situation is going to be answered with a four-hour session once a month by seven people who haven't had a chance to speak with the business manager or the superintendent is quite ridiculous. Even the budget subcommittee, who met often and had documentation from left, right, and all over the place, had a difficult time interpreting what was going on with the constant changing of the numbers and the constant changing of the documents. So I'd say that, in particular, a budget subcommittee is critically important for a school committee that's monitoring roughly $32 million of city and federal money. So I'd say, I don't know why you might be doing that. I don't know why you--
So I think you're actually moving into a next agenda item.
And that's an extra item?
That is two items down, so, or one item down. Right now, I'm just talking about the role of the subcommittees.
You said you wanted a motion?
Yes, I'd like a motion to support the understanding that the role of the subcommittee is to support the work of the full committee, and the work that they do is by charge from the full committee.
So is it in conflict with our rules and procedure?
That was, moved my member Ekstrom, and there was a question by Mayor Martin.
Oh, I see. Well, I didn't hear--
Can you use the mic, Susan?
I didn't hear a motion.
I didn't hear that.
I suggested a motion to support the definition of the role of the subcommittee as a body that supports the work of the full committee and acts upon charges of the full committee.
What does our policy say? Do you have it?
Doesn't. There's a motion, but there's not--
There's no second.
I'll second that.
Second, my member Karen. Okay, great. All right. I see superintendent, I think Mayor Martin might have had an additional comment.
Mine is actually not to this motion. I'm just going to ask all committee members, I've been doing this a lot with my mic off. I'm just going to ask you to please move your mic close to you when you speak. We do have people that watch from home. Sometimes I get updates throughout the meeting, and people are having trouble hearing at home. It really is important, in addition to those folks in the room, for the record that people can hear you. So if you do have a comment, if we can just do one at a time and into the microphone, it's very helpful. Thank you very much.
It doesn't, may I see? Hold on, I just want to read the next one. I'm not doing something that's going to be--
I think you may have found it, but B pulled up.
Member Johnson, thank you.
Are we in discussion now of the motion that's been made and seconded?
Yes.
Okay. It's my impression that MASC are experts at school committees, and their guidance seems valuable. I think that this makes sense. There are other places in our rules that talk about not wanting school committee members to be accessing resources without a commission from the full-- to be accessing resources without a commission from the full committee, and so this is in line with that. It's essentially saying, if you're operating as a subcommittee, that you have a charge from the full committee, and you can therefore access the resources you need to do the job. But it does make sense to me that the body as a whole should be involved in that. Certainly, there are commissions that would be expansive enough that people may have topics that come up. We don't know exactly all the topics, but they have a charge which may be broader. Sometimes we may give a committee a very specific charge, and sometimes we may give them a very broad charge and broad access to resources to fulfill that charge. So for that reason, I'm in support of this definition of the role.
Member Hollins.
We have a longstanding policy on subcommittees of the school committee, and it says just what you're talking about. The subcommittee will be provided with a list of its functions and duties. So what you're saying is their current policy.
Is just clarifying it a little deeper.
Yes, but with budget, it is very broad. If you have a standing subcommittee to understand the budget, and that's its duty, then that subcommittee should be doing that. It shouldn't be restrained. It is complicated, so I don't understand it. I don't under, I could understand if you want a motion to eliminate a standing committee for budget, but if you have a committee and you're charging them to try to understand all the funds and receipts and expenditures of its multimillion-dollar budget, to micromanage and say, "You can talk about this, but you can't talk about that," it just doesn't make any sense to me. You have a standing committee for budget. It says here you have a list of duties, so if the duty is to try to understand the budget, if you want to clarify it, but I can't understand your motion of further refining that because that's a, anyway, I can't support that because we operate by policy, and the policy is really clear, I think.
I disagree. I think this is actually really clear when you attend trainings on being a school committee member. And my understanding is that the majority of the members of the school committee have not attended the required trainings, that we are, the charting of the course training and potentially additional trainings. And I actually think that, you know, we, in my time serving on this committee, we have approached the use of the subcommittee in different ways, and we've really just gone off the rails. And what's happening now is that we need to clean up our act. We need to get things focused. I've seen agenda topics that are not priorities for the full committee and are not priorities for the subcommittee that have landed on agendas. This takes up so much time when time is very limited. And so this is essentially a request, a plea, really, for us to get organized and to be really focused. The other part of it, too, is this idea that, you know, I really want to be committed to transparency and building trust, and I think that there is a trust problem on our committee. And I think part of the reason why this exists is because sometimes things happen without the knowledge of the full body, and people question that. And I think that the way to remedy that is to be very clear in our full committee meetings as to what it is that we are requesting of each of our members, and especially of our subcommittees. So this was, as Member Karen stated, it was part of policy conversation on the role of the subcommittee and the standing subcommittee's policy and what to potentially include. This is how this came forward. I received multiple requests from members related to addressing the role of the subcommittees. I did hear feedback, considerable feedback, about the budget subcommittee. I heard requests related to just being more formal and actually kind of tightening things up in our process. And so this is a simple reflection of that. It is just, you know, I'm asking for this simple commitment. It doesn't, I don't believe that it necessarily unnecessarily bars our subcommittees from doing the work that they need to do. If there's something that's going to health and safety, we should all know about it. If there's something that's landing on the budget subcommittee agenda, we should all know about it. And guess what? It should be a priority for our group. So this is part of a larger request for us to tighten up our practice, and I don't think it's out of line. I think it's in alignment with our policy. I think that it opens up transparency, and it builds trust in our group. That's where I'm at. Mayor Martin.
Yes, I think tightening up the process comes from the chair. So when you, when the chair gives information to the subcommittee to work on something, you give a timeline, you expect the rerecommendation back from the subcommittee. As you can see, we've been, we spent, say, quite a while working on the same topic in subcommittees. Even the policy and health and safety have been continuously working over the same issue, whether it's water, or safety on sidewalks, or parking. It constantly comes back. The idea that the subcommittees are reaching out, I think, is indicative of the fact that there are a number of issues that need to be addressed, and they're not always given the direction in which to do that. So if we're going to focus on the discussion and the role of subcommittees, we should also know, it's my impression, that the chair of a subcommittee does the agenda. The chair of the whole committee gives the subcommittee chair information as to what to work on. So if we're going to sever that relationship and not have a chair with direction from, or chair having autonomous autonomy over the subcommittee, then we've pretty much taken out the autonomy of the committee and made it a chair committee. So I'm not into having one person rule over all the subcommittees. I'm also not interested in having, if there is no charge to the subcommittee, there is no need for the subcommittees to meet. That would be up to the chair. If there are no ongoing business, there's no old business, there's no new issue, then you wouldn't have the, a meeting. That seems obvious. But if it would not, no charge given to the subcommittee, then the subcommittee doesn't meet. You've taken away an arm of the democratic and transparent committee work that's supposed to be working with the school department. The school department, including the superintendent, is obligated to provide information to the school committee. That's in, if not in contracts, it's certainly in the charter. So the whole idea that we are overworking the school department that has a $19 million budget to get information that we're supposed to monitor, let's really address that. We need to, we need to be doing our job here.
So I'll respond quickly, and then I saw, I think, Member Johnson, did you have your hand up, and Superintendent. So actually, what I'm suggesting is the complete opposite of what you're saying. And part of the reason why I'm bringing this to the table is because I think that our past practice is flawed. And so, yes, sometimes, in the past, the chairperson would say, maybe speak with the chairperson of the subcommittee and say, "Actually, what's happening right now is this, and we need to, you know, please add this to your agenda." But that didn't always happen in a public meeting. It didn't always happen so that the full body was aware that it was happening. Even when we had calendars, there's constant questioning as to whether or not we're addressing those calendar items. And part of it is because it doesn't come to the full committee table to specifically just say, "Hey, we're tossing this to you right now, please take this over." So I actually believe that moving forward with a process like this, where the full committee is saying, "Health and safety, I would like you to take up conversation on the Safe Schools LGBTQIA information that DESI provides, and we all know that, and we all agree, and there it goes." And it's happening at a, at a, at a public meeting. It's very clear, it's very transparent, the subcommittee takes it up. I also believe that, you know, what I heard you just say is that our staff, our superintendent and administrators, they are obligated to provide information to the committee, to the committee. So when the committee is operating as a whole body, that's, we're the ones that are charging them to provide us with information. And yes, yes, subcommittees also, within a reasonable range, have the same authority to do that. But it also has to be with the understanding of the full body. The full body's got to be behind it. Full body's got to support that we want to have more information on a particular topic. And so I don't want to micromanage. I don't, I think it's not acceptable for the full committee to necessarily be micromanaging every single little thing at all times, but that's not what it's, that's not what it's about. You know, it's about the full committee saying, "Hey, we give you permission to look at basketballs in our basketball inventory," and that includes whatever the subcommittee requests, the information that they request from our administrators related to basketballs. So that's where I'm at. I, I saw Member Johnson, I saw the superintendent, I see Member Hollins. Did you have your hand up, Member Karen? Member Johnson.
I, I'm new to the committee, and I know there's more I need to do to, like, learn about the practices and the policies. I thought I heard Member Hollins say that this is essentially a reaffirmation of what we already believe, and so I think that's great. We should reaffirm it because it seems like we've gotten a little far from it. I mean, the, I think that it may, it sounds like there may be some, well, I think one thing that's great about this is it tries to clarify what are the charges, the existing charges, the standing charges that this, the full committee has made to the subcommittees. I don't, if, if members of the budget subcommittee thought their role was to delve into any and all things budget, it sounds like either they misunderstood the charge that was put to them, or the charge was too broad. So I think it's very useful to get very clear about what, what we are charging groups with and what we aren't. I'll also say that I think there are some challenges kind of like baked into Robert's rules and having to vote for or against, not being able to kind of build consensus, or it kind of gets us into kind of an oppositional stance. I'll just say that as a process observation, but I, I think sometimes we're arguing even when we don't really disagree that much. I mean, if we all, we all, I think we all believe that the full committee should be authorizing any major use of the superintendent and the staff's time, that that shouldn't just be two or three members of the, of a subcommittee who have a broad charge that entitles them to any and all access. I think we understand that there should be some limits, reasonable limits for, to keep that use of that valuable resource to things that are, and have been a stated priority of the committee as a whole, and I think that's what you're trying to do, and I appreciate you, Chair, for, for doing it, and I hope that we can, I'm not sure, I guess the other thing I was going to say is I'm, as much as this is an interesting conversation, I think that, I doubt that there's much change in members' opinions that's likely to happen due to more conversation, although I'm happy to hear more people's thoughts if they have them.
Superintendent.
Member Karen's hand was up before mine.
Member Karen.
I was just going to say again, I think there's this assumption that we're talking about the budget subcommittee only, but as the chair of the health and safety subcommittee, I made this mistake multiple times. It's not just an attack on the budget subcommittee, this has nothing to do with them only. I put things on agenda that I was interested in learning about. It was not necessary. As a safety committee, I could learn about everything, whether or not the door handles all work on every building could be a topic for me, and that's a waste of everybody's time. So it's not a direct thing. It's about all of the subcommittees spending a lot of time on things that they don't need to because it's not useful for everybody. I have much more important things to learn about as a safety person than whether or not the door handles work, but I was intrigued. So I've made this mistake. I am owning my mistake and deciding to help everybody who comes after me learn how this should go.
Member Hollins.
I have three quick comments. The first is, there has to be a place on our agenda to mention things on our mind that could be then the agreement of the committee to go somewhere. We can't not be allowed to send emails, which I agree, not have anything on our agenda where we can bring up topics and not have subcommittees picking up topics they think are important, so that's one thought. The second is, there's been a lot of discussion about the problems of the budget subcommittee, and we really haven't looked at the facts of that yet, so I think before saying what the problem is that it's overburdening certain people, that's a good topic to take up because this is one of the most important functions we have, and it isn't working well, I agree. And the third is, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee take up--
There's a motion on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry. So later, I'd like to make a motion. But my third issue is, there are issues with the budget process that have to be addressed, or no matter what we say about subcommittees, it won't work well, in my opinion, so.
Did you have a comment, Superintendent?
I did, go ahead. I had a comment, I was just thinking about the last comment that was made. I just wanted to add some context because I was present when the MAS C was advising the policy subcommittee, and it was my understanding that this is actually intended to empower the school committee. This is really about how a school committee can be most effective and powerful in accomplishing the work that the committee sets for itself. And because you are a public body, and any individual member has no authority as an individual member, but the body has authority by virtue of making decisions as a majority of the committee, then this really helps you do that as quickly as you want to. So there's no limit on how much work, how many requests you can make of administrators, really anything. This really doesn't limit any action of the committee at all, except it makes everyone aware of those actions and helps the chair to effectively funnel those actions into the fastest way to get it done through subcommittee. So just wanted to speak again to the intent that I heard coming from MAS C's guidance on this, and they were really floored. I think they were quite surprised that subcommittees were coming up with agenda topics that the full committee didn't know about, and it was quite the opposite, that they were saying, "Your full committee deserves to know what work is being done by individual members of your committee. This is your committee, and you have a right to know what's going on." And if minutes aren't coming before the full committee for approval of the subcommittees, and if the charge isn't coming from the full committee to the subcommittees, then is the committee really even in charge? And the question was really, how do you, as a committee, get in charge of the work that you, as a committee, are getting done through your subcommittees? So I actually see this as quite empowering of the committee, and I just wanted to offer that.
Member Johnson.
I move to call a question.
Second, my member Hollins. All those in favor of calling a question?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Mayor Martin opposed. Any abstentions? Katie, were you a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion to call the question passes. Susan, could you read the motion to us, please?
To support the definition of the role of the subcommittee as a body that supports the work of the full committee and acts upon the charges of the full committee.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. So the next item is subcommittee assignments and recommendation to dissolve budget subcommittee and operate as a committee of the whole. I'll start with the first part of this. The, the reason why this is here is because we have a new member, Member Johnson, and it's my recommendation that Member Johnson join the policy subcommittee. And then further, I do recommend that-- And then further, I do recommend that regarding budget-related items that we move forward for the duration of this year, this calendar year, operating as a committee of the whole in regards to budget and finance. The reason why I'm putting this recommendation forward is because I received requests from multiple members, essentially, I believe, all of the members that are not on the budget subcommittee, to have the opportunity to learn more about the budget, to be, either become a member of the budget subcommittee, or just have workshop on the budget, or additional information. And I think that in order to best move forward and be mindful of everyone's time, because any, any final decisions on the budget, any final financial decisions are made here at the full body, that we provide this opportunity to all of our members for additional experience and education with a hands-on committee of the whole addressing budget and finance. That's where this is coming from. So my, it's my understanding that I have the authority to appoint members to subcommittees, and that the committee should essentially vote in to support any committee assignments. So I'm asking for the support of the committee to assign Member Johnson to the policy subcommittee. So I, pardon?
So who?
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Member Ekstrom. Is there any deliberation on this? Member Johnson? No? Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mayor Martin, are you in favor?
Aye.
Great. Is that unanimous? Okay. You're a yes. Susan's a yes? Okay, thank you. Okay, and then, um... I move that the school committee move forward for the rest of the calendar year as... I move that the school committee, for the rest of the calendar year, dissolve the budget subcommittee and operate as a committee of the whole in regards to budget and finance topics.
So moved.
Sorry, Susan. It was, I move that the school committee dissolve the budget subcommittee and, for the duration of the calendar year, and move forward as a committee of the whole in regards to budget and finance topics. I think that was pretty much it. So I did technically move it. That was then supported by Member Ekstrom and also Member Johnson. Did I hear that? Okay, I see two hands on this side. First, Member Karen.
I just have a quick clarifying question, only because I think this is gonna be one of the first questions that come up. It's not your intention that we would discuss all of the budget subcommittee stuff, or budget committee stuff at our full meeting, but instead would hold a separate budget meeting for everyone?
Thank you, Member Karen. It is my, I think that in order for this to be successful, we would have to all, excuse me, schedule additional meetings of the full body. And I have requested from the superintendent any potential dates. I think that we, you know, in order to satisfy everyone's needs, we would have to have those dates very soon so that we could schedule them and ensure that everyone would be available. So yes, I would see this as probably a combination of occasionally things coming straight to our regular meetings. But likely, actually, most of them, especially when there is a need for some extended deliberation or education, to actually hold meetings in more of a workshop format, that would be the entire committee, so a special meeting. Member Hollins.
I was gonna ask the same question. There's really a lot to budget, and there's really a lot for people that are thinking about details, looking at details. I don't see how that happens unless there are... I can see how it happens with the full committee, but with separate meetings that are regularly scheduled. And I hope you would have a consistent time every month so people can schedule around. Otherwise, I really don't think it's responsible to have like a one-minute discussion of a budget this big with so many issues. And so, 'cause you're working on pretty much three budgets at a time, closing out one year, figuring out the year you're in, having a prospective year, and you have to keep all of that in your head. So it's a lot.
Thank you. Just quickly in response, I've never suggested a one-minute deliberation on any of these items, and I agree that there needs to be adequate time and space for our membership to deliberate on these topics. Mayor Martin.
I think you said special meeting.
Yes.
Would you consider a second regular meeting for budget? Then everyone could plan for it, even the superintendent?
So, according to policy, we have our one regular meeting per month. It would require a change in policy. And what I'm suggesting is essentially a short-term arrangement. I know that there will be a new body coming in in January, and I'm not sure how that group may like to operate. So this, to me, is a little bit of, you know, addressing some dysfunction that we have now, allowing for educational opportunities for some of our newer members, especially those that may be carrying on to serve the Greenfield Public Schools. And so, yes, I do want us to have scheduled meetings so that everyone is aware of when they would be and to have them set. I definitely, you know, I don't want them to be just like called out of nowhere unless there's some kind of urgent item. Member Ekstrom, and then Member Hollins.
Call the question.
Okay, is there a second to call the question?
Hi, second.
Second, my Mayor Martin. All those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
All those opposed? Member Hollins opposed. Motion to call the question carries. Susan, could you read us the motion?
"That the school committee dissolve the budget subcommittee for the rest of the calendar year and move forward as a committee of the whole in regards to budget and finance topics."
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Member Hollins, I didn't see your vote.
You said there would be separate meetings scheduled for budget. Okay.
Member Hollins is a yes. I believe Mayor Martin was a yes. And I think that is unanimous. So what I will do is, as soon as reasonably possible, I will look at some dates with the superintendent as, and try to put forward a calendar to everybody. You have a look of concern. Okay.
I would suggest that with the, with the greater notice of a special meeting and, and with the relaxing of providing a subcommittee budget with information, that we get financial information at least five or seven days before the scheduled meeting.
With hard copies.
Okay, am I hearing, are you putting forward a motion?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah. It's a change in practice. The committee has actually already voted for 48 hours.
Did someone file a grievance on the change of practice?
Pardon?
Did someone file a grievance against the school committee for change of practice? We're asking for information on financial stuff five to seven days before we discuss it.
The full committee actually took formal action and requested information 48 hours in advance. So as it is right now, you know, I think that our administrators can make an attempt to provide information further in advance of 48 hours, but it's not a directive of the body.
I understand, thank you. So I would move that we instruct the superintendent and business manager to provide financial information five days before a scheduled meeting discussing budget and finance.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Member Hollins. Discussion. I see the superintendent, I see Member Johnson. Member Johnson first.
It seems like you have to have two timelines, both when, for this motion to work, you'd also have to have a timeline for when school committee members made requests for particular information. In other words, you can't say the information has to be to them five to seven days before the meeting when you're not giving them a timeline for when they're gonna receive their requests, because otherwise you can end up with unrealistic demands on the staff's time to try to get information to a committee within a certain timeframe.
Thank you, Member Johnson. Member Hollins.
Generally, the reports that we get are computer-generated. They're not originally, you know, someone sitting down, it's just updated reports. Or it would be what the school committee has requested at a meeting, so there would be time. Generally, it's reports that are printed out.
I disagree with that. I think the Muniz report is definitely, you know, a few keystrokes and clicks of the mouse. However, this document is a special document that the school committee has requested that I believe is additional labor and does require manual update. That's my understanding. And I have also, we also see other reports that are manually updated. This one is another one as well. You know, especially in deliberation related to, say, for example, the FY '20 budget. Those documents are prepared. You know, we see our, you know, transportation coordinator and business manager putting forward this one-page, individual, you know, prepared document for us. So what was stated about simple reports coming from a program, I don't think is entirely accurate. I saw the superintendent, and then I see Member Hollins' hand again.
I'd like to state a matter of fact for the record. This committee voted on multiple occasions for information from City Hall that was not received ever, despite votes of the full committee, before the budget was passed by this committee. Also, as a matter of fact, it's my understanding that every piece of information that has been requested by myself or another administrator has been provided to the committee along the time lane, reasonable or unreasonable, as requested. I'd like to understand the basis for a moving-the-yard post. Yet again, it's not part of my goals. It's not reflected anywhere. We're adding meetings. I'd like to understand why.
Member Hollins.
Are you suggesting that we would... I'm sorry, are you, I'm sorry, Chairman Nunez. I understood we would have separate meetings, but are you saying that the report we receive that's organized by our budget and cost centers would be replaced?
No, I never said anything about replacing anything. I was clarifying the comment that was made, that you made, that, you know, these reports are just reports requested from a software program, and that's not true.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I see Steve, and then I see Mayor Martin. Okay.
I'm the one who has to put all this together.
Not all of it, Steve.
You do too. And so, I'm gonna give you my two cents worth, and you can take it for whatever that's worth. First of all, eight cents, how about that? The, whatever timeline you put on it, I would suggest that you not do five to seven. Either decide on five or seven, because then we get into a squishy area of what day is when? Is this a five-day request? Is this a seven-day request? Just decide on a number and go with it. Number two, as long as I've been here for, it's been about 11 months now, 10, 10, 11 months, the financial statements that I provide are simply that, financial statements. What you will want to see, and I'm hoping you, you will see this and request this in the future, but that, more analysis. Right now, all you're getting is just a piece of paper, and yes, that is a one-button push. That really doesn't tell you anything. It's, it's extremely unhelpful. Most subcommittee members, most subcommittees that I've been on require an analysis piece to it, which requires quite a bit of work to do the analysis, and that's why analysis usually comes only quarterly to the school committee, not biweekly. The current system of biweekly meetings is just frankly untenable. And then oftentimes, information is requests at that biweekly meeting, which requires, which I do not receive a agenda for until the couple days beforehand, and then I literally have a day to put together the information to get to, get it to you within 48 hours. So I would suggest that the requests go both ways. If you decide on seven days, I will need at least seven days' notice in order to get you the information. And not including weekends, 'cause seven workdays to get the information ahead of time. So, you know, it's, it's a couple things, and I think the committee would work a little bit better if we focus in on analysis, focus in on setting agendas far in advance of what you'll wanna see, far in advance, and having that analysis not be biweekly, but at least quarterly, monthly, something of that nature. Because it, it turns into quite a, you're always behind the eight ball with these two, two-week meetings and less than 24 hours' notice of what is on the agenda. It needs to be planned much better.
Member Hollins.
I, I agree with Steve. I want to say that the budget subcommittee at a Warren meeting did make a schedule of topics for the year that was aligned with the schedule of topics for the school committee that we had also made together at a special meeting. And that wasn't supported, but there was an effort to have an annual schedule so that different areas of the budget came up each month when there were action items. And I think, I really think it's an important topic. Steve is mentioning a few things that are important to him. The budget subcommittee was really important, I think, to each individual member of the budget subcommittee that they see the final budget. Earlier, we saw the budget, I think, when it was sent into the newspaper. And so I, I think we need to put on our agenda, instead of saying what the problem is, and it's this person or that person or this process, I think we need to put on our agenda that the school committee take up the process, the charge, the process, and the timeline for budget discussions. It just has to be set out so that the different parties aren't at war. That, I think, is a dysfunction, the timeline for receiving, just the broad stroke when we develop a budget. And if we could have a meeting to discuss that, I think however we meet would be much smoother. I want to say that the, there was a set times for the budget committee that you might wanna consider for your special meetings, which was first Wednesday, before school committee met, so that if it was going to be some action. And then third Monday... met, so that if it was going to be some action, and then third Monday, which is in the middle of the month. So those were already scheduled with the administration, maybe you'd want to consider one of those times for meetings of the whole on budget.
Thank you, I see member Johnson, and then member Ekstrom.
I think the motion on the table is to request, or it's to mandate that reports come, budget reports, unspecified budget reports get brought to the committee five to seven days before the meeting, and I'm going to vote against that, because I think that we have professionals working with us, and if we have requests for information or analysis, they will work with us in a professional way to establish a timeline that's both workable for them and for the committee.
Thank you, member Johnson. I see member Hollins first, and then Mayor Martin, or I'm sorry, member Ekstrom, my apologies.
I actually want to back up Glenn a little bit. We have, I'm just, I'm looking at our agenda, and I have no idea where this topic is within the agenda for the day, and
Thank you.
Let's focus on moving forward.
Mayor Martin.
I don't see where it is on the agenda either. I think we're still talking about the subcommittees, but the, if we don't act with the instructing, a directive to the superintendent as she has requested, because it's a change, because it's now 48 hours, whenever the special meeting is called, it will be 48 hours. So you'll have 48 hours before the meeting to discuss 350 line items, or whatever there are. So I think you need more time to review, despite the fact there's no analysis in here. Most people like to look and see if it's a plus or a minus, and then see if we're on schedule on budget. So I suppose it's, I support this because the superintendent requested a definitive hour, day limit for production of documents before a special meeting on budget. If we don't support this, then it's 48 hours, and I don't think that gives much, much lead time for the professionals that are providing the documentation we're looking for at a meeting.
I just, superintendent, sorry, I'd just like to clarify, I don't believe I requested that at all. In fact, I think we've done a really good job of providing this information with no lead time on our part. We get five minutes, and you get 48 hours. These meetings are regularly called with very little notice, and we still produce documents. We're operating under onerous votes of the committee that are totally unnecessary to produce documents ahead of time, as if we are not professionals and as if we do not do our jobs. I'm hearing things like, it was important that you get a budget earlier in the year, we didn't see it. These sound like complaints and criticisms of staff. I'm going to be, ask you to be mindful of personnel and contractual rights of employees. And I'm happy to provide information, I'm happy to talk about the budget, we like this work, we do this work, there's no conflict here at all. We've provided information in a transparent way. It would be helpful if we had the information we needed from the city to provide the documents and complete the budget that we're doing. So if the committee's interested in entertaining a vote to support getting timely information from the city, that would be helpful. But regardless, we're going to provide you documents as best we can, balancing the other duties of the district. So again, if you're going to make some changes, I'd just like to understand the rationale. If there's a concern, that could be addressed perhaps more privately. If there's not a concern, I'd like to move on.
Okay, I wouldn't, Chair?
Yes.
Since I was addressed by the superintendent on a couple of items, the request from the superintendent this evening was that she would not accept a discussion by the chair or the committee to change the process for presenting information to the Subcommittee that is now a whole committee called by special meeting. So that's why I brought the motion forward, so that she would have a directive, because she stated that there was already, it was a change of work orders or change of schedule. So that's why I promoted this. I also just heard that I should be mindful, or we should all be mindful of employees who are professionals and have contractual sensitivities maybe, and that we shouldn't criticize anyone. And then I heard right after that, a criticism of the city not providing information to the business manager and superintendent, and I find that quite untrue, and it was explained several times over several months where the information was. So I mean, that's off-topic for sure, and I'm willing to discuss that further any time. I'm supporting this motion to have the financial documents five days, not five or seven, five days, as I stated in the motion, before we have the special meeting on budget, not two days before the meeting.
Member Johnson.
I move to call the question.
I second. All those in favor of calling the question? That's unanimous. Could you read the motion for us, please, Susan?
I'll shout.
Thank you.
I instruct the superintendent and business manager to provide financial information five days before meetings on the budget.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And I don't think any abstentions, so motion fails. Two yeses, four nos. Thank you. Okay. The next item is rules of procedure. I received multiple requests from members related to rules of procedure. Thank you, Steve.
It's still live, maybe Susan will get it.
Yeah, let me, I'm trying to find the document, so, so it's behind a few things. So this is in your packet, this is a printout of the city council's rules related to debate. The requests that I received were specific to having some rules to kind of create some boundaries related to debate. That was my understanding of the requests. And so one request was to, like, you know, can we just adopt what the city council has? So I brought this forward essentially as an exhibit, a sort of foundation for this deliberation. My suggestion is to modify the rules of debate that the council uses to actually limit our debate slightly more. There says, has a five-minute limit, let me find it, that would be on B, item two, no member shall have or hold the floor for more than five consecutive minutes of debate. And I am suggesting that we would modify that to be three minutes consecutive of debate. I also want to point out before we take a motion and consider more of this, is that a lot of this actually is part of the practice that we do now. As the chair, I try to recognize members that haven't spoken yet prior to allowing someone else to speak. I think that at the beginning, it was definitely an area where I needed to improve in my facilitating of the meeting, but I think that there has been some improvement there. And so, yes, I guess I'll just leave it at that now. If there's a motion, if anyone has any motion to put forward, either to accept the council rules of debate or to modify it in any way, I'm open to that. I'm bringing this to the table because I think it's going to help us in our operations, and also because of multiple requests that I received independently. Mayor Martin.
I'll move that the school committee accept the town council rules of debate, section 565-5, and wherever counselor is mentioned, be replaced by school committee member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mayor Martin, do you want to speak to your motion?
Right, I forgot to add the three minutes in place of the five.
Okay, that's your intent.
I'll turn that motion to three-minute, three consecutive minutes of debate rather than what is in the council debate section. Okay. I think this is, I think
Wait, one second, did you second it?
I did.
Do you accept that? Okay, thank you.
Just briefly, I agree with the chair, there's a good opportunity to put a tighter corral around the discussion, move meetings along quicker, and still maintain the aggressive respect we have for each other.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Any additional deliberation? I see member Hollins.
Is this going to apply to budget meetings? Well, I mean, where it says, no member, I'm on B1, no member can speak more than twice to the same question, because new information, new statistical information is added? I'm just wondering if B1 will apply to this, and what is the differentiation, if there is one, between debating and deliberating? Is there a difference?
I consider them to be synonymous in this context, and my understanding is that yes, this would apply as a basic guideline for our deliberations as a body.
May I be recognized, Chair Nunez?
Oh, yes, thank you so much. Member Johnson.
To say that in instances where committee members need to speak more times than is put down in these rules, they can make a motion to suspend the rules in order to have a fuller discussion, so that's possible with, I think, a two-thirds majority.
Thank you, member Johnson. Member Karen.
It does say in there, without leave from the chair, so the chair, without a vote of two-thirds, could easily just decide, okay, this new information has been added, and continue. And if we feel, for whatever reason, the chair is not being fair, we can all work together to suspend the rules.
Thank you, member Karen. Any additional comments? This is actually very consistent with Roberts' rules, and it's a more formal approach, and part of the reason why it's formal is to keep things civil and respectful, and to keep the flow of the conversation moving. Okay, I see member Hollins.
On B1, it says, no member shall speak more than twice to the same question, debate questions, so you're saying that this is going to govern our deliberations, and same question could be broadly defined as, you know, what's in, what's in our budget review? I am more interested in really understanding the budget and being able to have accurate numbers, and any question any member has going through it, because it's so important to the community. I'm more interested in that than any member of this committee not being allowed to ask a question about the budget. So I have trouble with B1 regarding the budget. I understand other philosophical issues, but I don't understand how this is applied to a budget discussion, and where it says you can't speak more than once to the same question, that could be on, it isn't defined, so that could be interpreted to mean we're looking at the budget report. I'm sensitive to that, because I go through the reports carefully and find things, so I don't think it's in the community's interest that we're not allowed to have active discussion of our budget, and that's my concern. B1, definition of same question, and how it applies to budget discussions.
I see the superintendent, and then member Ekstrom.
I'm looking for clarification, but my understanding is that these are our town council rules, and that they use these for all town council, including the budget, and that while our budget is roughly $20 million, theirs is roughly $50 million. And if it seems to work for the budget deliberations at the council, I would think that it would allow for the budget deliberations here, and it does in B1 address the fact that you can still sort of seek permission from the chair to address something.
Member Ekstrom.
Call a question?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Martin. All those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous, I think.
Yep.
Susan Ferber, can you please read back the motion?
That the school committee accept the council's rules of debate, section 565-5, and wherever counselor is mentioned, replaced by school committee member. And for B2, change the limit to three consecutive minutes of debate in place of five minutes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Thank you. Subcommittee minutes and use of the school committee secretary, this showed up on our last agenda and was tabled due to time. So this corresponds to the draft minutes process that is on the same page with the role of subcommittees. And I state here that the committee voted to hire a secretary to support the group by drafting minutes for our subcommittees. At this time, the secretary reviews an audio recording of the subcommittee minutes and drafts the minutes according to what is heard on the audio recording. Audio recordings and minutes are posted online. This exceeds open meeting law requirements for posting and provides an additional check on accuracy and provides transparency to the public. Unless there is a vote to stop this practice, it will continue. This is what the committee, the committee has requested this. The MAS C recommended practice regarding the acceptance of subcommittee minutes into the record for the full committee to receive the draft minutes and vote to accept them at the same time in the agenda that the full committee minutes are accepted. I'm asking for a vote to adopt a new practice of accepting the draft minutes at the full committee meeting, and what I meant is the draft minutes of subcommittee. Any revisions to the minutes would need to happen on the floor. Attorney General guidelines for minutes will be followed. And then I added a note at the end to just remind everyone that our practice has really dramatically improved in the past few years. When I first came on board, subcommittees, I don't believe were even drafting minutes. So I'm really proud of the effort that this body has made to improve this practice and to comply with the law. And I think it's worth noting everything that we do, and, you know, I think that at times, we hear different feedback related to the timing of when the minutes are received and beyond, but we far exceed the requirements in the law, and it's really important for us to recognize that and celebrate that. So I think that this is an example of us continually improving our practice. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the new practice of accepting the subcommittee draft minutes at the full committee meeting, with any revisions to minutes made on the floor.
So moved.
Moved by member Johnson.
Second.
Second by member Ekstrom. This is a considerable change in practice, I'll just, you know, speak quickly to this idea, but I also think that it's very orderly, and it makes a lot of sense for us to just, you know, do this as a full body, accept them into the public record, and there it is. is. And I think it will take a little bit of a period of adjustment for us since we aren't in a sort of routine as it is right now related to subcommittee minutes and approval of subcommittee minutes. Any discussion? Yes, Superintendent.
I will say there was one additional added benefit, which is that members of the public that are interested in the school committee meetings, attend in person or review the packet online, will then also have the minutes of the subcommittees, which gives them a very holistic idea of the work that the committee is trying to accomplish. So to somebody who's a member of the public and interested in transparency, yes, there are recordings and minutes posted in the subcommittees, but it puts it all in one place. So it does have an ease of access for the public.
Member Hollins.
In one of our packets, I believe it was the meeting before this one, we had asked Attorney Quinn, and he had answered in a document that we never discussed, but it was in our packet. The question was, "Who's responsible for the content of subcommittee meetings?" Because the subcommittee is a body. It's an individual.
Meeting minutes. It was a typo. You'll see.
Subcommittee meeting minutes, yes. But we asked the question because we are a body, and when a subcommittee meets, the subcommittee is a body. And the answer was, and I believe that's the clarification I've had, the body is responsible for its minutes. So it would seem to me, in the future, we have a policy subcommittee that wants to make sure their minutes are a certain way. It's up to that body to be responsible for their minutes. Again, there's only two people on this committee that are continuing into the next, for sure, into the next after December. And I think this is a topic to pass along personally. I want to say that one of the issues for the budget subcommittee, why this seems so important to me... If you'll listen to the tape of the November meeting, the whole meeting was about minutes. The conversation was, members present thought, because we were discussing budget and it was so important, there should be detail of what we're discussing to be transparent so people can understand it. The minutes through the secretary, there were issues because the guidance was that we should own... We should... It didn't work out. Our minutes from November on do not conform with Attorney General guidelines where there's a summary of the discussion on each subject. And then the minutes from July through March weren't posted until March. So there's a problem with the minutes. And it's... I think it's up to the body to decide what they want in their minutes, and it would just waste time for the school committee, for those discussions to take place at school committee.
Member Karen. I guess in that last statement, she might have answered my question, but I don't... I don't know why we can't make those adjustments on the floor at the full committee meeting. If you come to... If you're on the budget subcommittees, and since that's what we're talking about, and you come and you say, "That is not what happened," and don't feel like that's appropriate, you can then say, "I would like to take time to take these back." But in the meantime, the rest of us have a little bit more of an idea of what happened at that meeting. I feel like I have no idea what happened at most of those meetings because I've never seen any minutes. Because the policy or the practice, I should say, has been that you will approve them before I see them.
They were in packets recently.
Right. But not enough.
Of order, I think we only speak one person at a time.
Thank you, Member Johnson.
So I think... And this is true for all of them. Some of the health and safety minutes have not come forward in fast enough, so nobody knows what we talked about because the agenda wasn't always ahead of time. So... Or, you know what I mean. So I think that it's important they just come, even if they're wrong. It's just like with our full committee minutes. They come, and we say, "Yeah, that's not quite right," and we make adjustments on the floor. I understand what you're saying about wasting time. I can see that becoming... We become bogged down in the minutes of not being perfectly accurate. That would waste time. But we can always say, "I'm going to table these," or "I'd like to refer these back to the budget subcommittee to be looked at again."
Superintendent.
I think I heard a couple of comments. One was that the minutes from November weren't up to the Attorney General standards, and another was about posting. So I'd just like to talk about the standards for minutes. We have the good fortune of having Susan Farber as the recording secretary for the full committee minutes, and this is a practice that she's been doing for many years, without naming how many number. Thank you. So for consistency, Susan actually provided some orientation and training to the new recording secretary for subcommittees. And then she not only did that at the beginning, but then also did additional check-ins. So when you're referring back in the fall, at the beginning of this year, I think that was, I believe the vote of the committee happened in perhaps October, and then, that's my memory, is that it was early in the fall. And then there was some additional training as she came up to speed with the school committee's expectation. So Attorney General guidelines say that there includes a summary of the record of action taken, for sure, but also the discussion summary. And so there's some discretion around how much discussion is appropriate. There's an excellent five-minute video on the Attorney General's webpage that just covers meeting minutes. It's literally five minutes. It covers this topic. I'd be happy to send the link without deliberation out to the committee. And it also recommends that, when appropriate, that the minority and majority opinion be expressed. And I think that that is fairly consistent with how subcommittee minutes are taken and how full committee minutes are taken. And to Member Karen's point, this committee has the authority for approving them. So you can always edit those. So I do think that that has been very helpful in bringing public transparency and consistency to the minutes.
Member Johnson.
Move to call the question.
My second. All those in favor of calling the question? Aye. And Susan, is that a yes? Okay. That's unanimous. Susan Farber, could you read back the motion, please?
To adopt a new practice of accepting subcommittee draft minutes at the full committee meeting with any revisions to minutes made on the floor.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. Okay, so we're coming up against our time constraints here. We do have a couple of important items. My suggestion at this point, related to time, is to move through... Attempt to move through item number 10. And unfortunately... Okay. I actually... Given the time constraints, I think that the best approach would be to table items 11 and 12, which is... Hurts my heart a little bit because we keep tabling policy and it's important. But we can do our best to prioritize them at the next meeting. The other items are, I think we can get done in a timely fashion and then save enough time for executive session. With that in mind, I think that we would be looking at probably going to about 10:30. So first, in an informal way, is the group able and interested in staying until about 10:30 as opposed to 10:00 p.m.? I'm saying a yes. I'm saying a yes. I'm saying a yes. Bill's ready to go. Okay.
I'll just say, let's just pretend to be enthusiastic about it.
Okay. Superintendent.
So I just want to express a concern about the deferral of Section D policies. These are our fiscal policies. And throughout the budget process, there was a lot of debate about how to implement these policies, ensuring that we were adhering to policies. And the policies that are coming forward, based on the recommendations of MAS C, differ significantly in some cases from this committee's, in particular because there are policies in Greenfield that do not exist anywhere else and that raise some concern about tying the hands of the committee. So I want to note that we have to make some difficult decisions as we move forward. And as a policy board, I really hope that the financial policies have top priority. And if there's going to be a budget meeting, then I think the financial policies should also be considered before any further budget work because of their importance. Thank you.
Thank you. So I move to table items 11 and 12.
Second.
Second by Member Hollins. Any discussion? Member Karen.
I will agree to table, but I really want to point out that, as the superintendent said, these are really important and that we should all show up at the next meeting having fully read these, fully understanding them, and with coming with questions. So we shouldn't be wasting time saying, "Oh, I haven't read that well enough." We have had these for multiple meetings. I'm always available for questions. I believe, without crossing any open meeting laws, you can send a question to the policy subcommittee ahead of time. They will not respond, but they can come back with an answer at the full committee meeting. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong. But that way, we are ready because this needs to be done, as the superintendent said.
Mayor Martin.
In the discussions with, what was it, MAS C? Did they say that we should vote these policies before we discuss 2020 budget or modified 2020 budget?
I don't believe that that came up necessarily. However, the discussion on these policies has been going on for several months, and the intent related to the timing of the policy discussion was to support budget deliberation. But your specific question of, you know, deliberating on the modified FY20 budget didn't come up exactly specifically as you're stating it.
Okay. May I ask if... Did we hire MAS C to do our policies over?
Yes. We didn't... We hired the MAS C to support and guide us through a full, comprehensive policy review. So yes, we are engaged in that program now.
Did that cost $7,000?
I think it was actually $10,000.
$10,000.
Over three years.
Over three years. So I noticed under legal and the warrant today, or in a payment to MAS C for $7,000 under legal. So I was curious as to how we made a legal payment without the full committee's approval.
I don't know. Is that... I mean, we can take a look at that. To MAS C?
Yes, it was. But I'll verify that. Mass association of school committees.
But you're looking at the...
Policy manual development.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if this was done in October, why we didn't... Why didn't we have a chance to chit-chat about this quite a few times? I know we've had policy on the agenda.
About what?
And I haven't been to policy subcommittee meetings, but if that's been ongoing, maybe it should have been brought to the full committee.
What's the question? Can you clarify your question?
I made four or five statements, and the question is, "How come we didn't know about this? How come we didn't know that..."
Wait, 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 wait. But what is the "it"? How come we didn't know about what? Hiring the MAS C to support us in policy review? Is that what you mean?
No. So the question before us right now that I asked, "Did MAS C advise us that we should pass the policies before we address any budget issues?" So we're going to be transferring and moving money around. So are we... Do we need a policy change to have that happen? So if that was the case, then I would be in favor of continuing the policy tonight so that we could accommodate budget discussions, as the superintendent had mentioned. If not, then move it off to the next meeting because it's... No offense, Member Karen, but it's been moved from meeting to meeting for a while.
It has. Yeah.
So I backed that up with the other evidence of what makes me think this way is, well, we gave them $7,000 in legal, then they must have given us some legal advice as well as given us new policies. Maybe. So I guess I asked one question and offered the balance of the information. The question is, does MAS C... Have they advised us that we must pass the policies before we make financial transactions?
No, they have not specifically advised us of that.
I'll yell about that.
My understanding, though, and is that there may be a need to revise the policies, suspend the policies, and go back and review because when we suspend a policy, we are then required to go back and then address it. We can suspend a policy temporarily and come back and address it. So yes, these all... This goes together. You're very right that it all goes together, but they did not specifically advise us the way that you stated. I see the superintendent. I think I see Katie. And then Steve came to the table. So let's start with the superintendent.
Okay. So I do just want to say that Section D was taken out of order specifically to anticipate a clear policy in place and not a policy transition during the budget. And that was taken early in the budget process for that reason. So we were hoping that we would have Section D completed. However, the committee wanted that to look before the budget went forward because it does impact how we approach the budget.
And then I saw Member Karen.
I was just going to reiterate what the superintendent said. The goal was to have this in place. It has gotten pushed off multiple times. On top of that, the MAS C, as Chair Nunez said, didn't specify how we should do it, but it was sort of under the impression of, "You need to decide how you want to do it. Do you want to continue to use the current policies for 2020? Or do you want to suspend them? Or do you want to try and get these done?" Our goal was to get them done, and we keep shoving them off.
Steve.
That bill is part of their overall work in policy development. It hasn't... It's not specific to any question that's come up here. So that's part of their... That's their final payment for the policy work that was approved, I want to say, like in October, November. And then that's their final payment now that it's done.
Member Hollins.
I think that the issue I once mentioned on the importance of the budget policies, there's only one major change. I went through all of the policies because they were just reviewed in 2016. They're being reviewed again. The major change that affects the budget is recommendation to rescind... This is my opinion. Rescind the policy on the structure of revolving funds. Rescind that whole policy. So if you worked with the policy the way it is, you know, there's a revolving fund and a recommendation for an amount to carry forward. This is put together to have financial...
Let's stay on topic. The motion is...
Could follow...
No, the motion is to table. So if there's something... I mean, is there something related to the motion?
No, it's just all of this discussion was the importance of the policies. That's the one policy that affects doing the budget.
Member Johnson.
That's what I'm going to say. Move to call the question.
Thank you.
Should we table these items?
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Member Ekstrom. Okay. All those in favor of calling the question? Aye. Okay. So the motion on the table is to table items 11 and 12. Who seconded that? Susan Hollins. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? One opposed. Motion to table carries. Okay. Okay. So we'll try to move through this as quickly as possible. So I'll try to move through this as quickly as possible. So there's a memo from Attorney Smith and also Attorney Long, who is, I believe, an attorney that works with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. Oh, and there is a memo. Yes. I don't know where mine went. So this is here to call attention to, this is actually in response to the committee's request at our last meeting to get legal opinion, a second legal opinion, on the definition of a two-thirds vote. This was sparked by the most recent budget deliberation and vote that the council participated in, and they received a memo from Attorney Quinn's office, Sullivan Hayes and Quinn, with the definition of a two-thirds vote to be defined as two-thirds of the body. I don't have it in front of me. No, it was not present in voting. So the difference here is actually our, so we had Peter Smith, we requested Peter Smith advise on the definition of the two-thirds, and his interpretation of the two-thirds vote would be present and voting, of members present and voting. And that definition was supported also independently by Attorney Long. The superintendent just reached out to the MASs to see if there was any kind of, any supporting cases or any opinion. So that's how that one came to the table. It wasn't something that was commissioned by the committee. So I'm calling attention to this because this is a different interpretation of the two-thirds rule, and it may have changed the deliberation at the council table. It would have changed the outcome of the budget vote, I think. And I think it's important for it to be here. Obviously, I'm following up because the school committee requested the attorney's opinion on this. Attorney Smith also recommended that we draft a letter to Attorney Quinn and a letter to the council. There's a draft letter. This is moving into item, the next items. So there's a draft letter to Attorney Quinn expressing some frustration with our attorney essentially not engaging with the school committee and not allowing us any advance notice of this opinion. And as stated in the final paragraph, we are at a loss to understand how your law firm, a school council, could provide a legal opinion so clearly adverse to the interests of the school committee without providing us with notice or an opportunity to respond. So this letter is here as a draft. I guess I'll just, I actually want to pause on myself and kind of move back to specifically item number seven. There's not a motion or anything necessarily needed related to the memo from Attorney Smith and the input from Attorney Long. Are there any questions or anything related to that? Yes, Mayor Martin?
Madam Chair, would you mind explaining these two letters and their conclusions?
Yes. So both of these letters conclude an opinion that the two-thirds vote in relation to the school committee budget would be defined as members present and voting. And abstentions don't count as a vote. And these were two independent attorneys that offered up this same opinion.
Well, to be clear, I think Peter Smith is an attorney for the school department and school committee.
Yes.
And he also served as full school committee attorney for a number of years.
Yes.
Attorney Michael Long is the, has been a personal attorney of the superintendent during contract negotiations and...
Really?
May represent, I don't see Mass Association of Superintendent, school superintendent. So it looks like the letter is from Attorney Long to Thomas Scott.
So it actually is listed in the via email, Mr. Thomas Scott, Executive Director, MASs.
Okay.
It's right there in the, and before you continue, I just want to clarify, my understanding is that this is an MASs attorney. This is not your individual attorney. Is that accurate?
How did Long and DePietro get...
Wait, pardon?
How did, why is Long and DePietro up here? Why didn't we get it from Mr. Thomas Scott, Executive Director?
I would be happy to forward the email chain to the committee if there's interest, but I'd like to back up a few steps. I did, I belong to the Professional Association of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. It occurred to me that in cities and towns all across the Commonwealth, school committees grapple with school budgets and councils grapple with how to fund those budgets. Chapter 44, Section 32 talks about the council's authority to increase the budget over the appropriation of the mayor by vote of the school committee. And that information was provided to the chair, I'm not sure who else, but the chair, the business manager, myself, and I believe the mayor via email, but it's also publicly available law, that taking a vote of the school committee would give the council the authority to exceed the mayor's budget up to the levy limit if they should so choose by a two-thirds vote. I forwarded the applicable section of the law to the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and asked if the Mass Association of School Superintendents had a position on the definition of two-thirds as required by that section of the law, with no further deliberation or discussion about the context here in Greenfield. And this is what was returned through that professional organization. Long and DePietro are the legal counsel for the Mass Association of School Superintendents.
No, you, Superintendent.
Okay. Thank you. The, I'm having a hard time reconciling these two opinions. So under Long or Smith, Scott, whoever, it states, it states, "Such as that contained in your charter of a vote of the full council, then I am of the opinion that the vote must be of the members present and voting." Moving down on the case of Kubik versus City of Chicopee, Kubik construed statutes containing an express statement that a two-thirds vote of all of the members of the city council. So giving Section 32 an interpretation relying on its plain language, that is, without the modifier, that the two-thirds vote is of the entire council, seems to be more in line with the construction the courts has given to these cases. So it seems the Kubik case is what he's talking about, and that was of the full council.
So you're missing the first sentence of, you know, the phrase, which is on the first page, and it says, "In the absence of some modifying language," which explicitly or alternatively strongly implies that a vote must be of the full body, either by a reference, such as that contained in your charter of a vote, quote, "of the full council," then I am of the opinion, and then it continues on. So basically, it's stating that because that is absent, he has the opinion that the two-thirds is voting, present and voting.
Okay. Those present and voting. But we have, I think in the charter, it's, there's at least a couple of references to special situations and appropriations for the two-thirds voting of the entire council. And I think Peter mentions that. So are you presenting both these opinions as the standard is present and voting, two-thirds present and voting?
I am presenting these two opinions because at our last school committee meeting, we requested to receive an opinion from Attorney Peter Smith as to the definition of two-thirds vote as it applied to the conversation held at the council level related to the school budget and beyond. But really, for us, it's about the school budget. And then the opinion of Mr. Attorney Long came via the superintendent, as she noted, she requested some support from the MASs. So these are here in response to the request of the committee.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify, MASs did not charge the district or there's, there's not, that is, it was an inquiry based on if there was a position of the organization.
Yes, Member Hollins.
Could I clarify? Has this been sent or are you looking for...
No, it's a draft.
Okay.
So before we move on to the draft letter, I, are there any other questions related to the memos? Okay. So then we'll move on to, I have here two items, draft letter to council and draft letter to Attorney Quinn. You don't have a draft letter to the council in your packet. I originally intended to include one, but I didn't really care for the draft letter that I had drafted. So before sending out the packet, I decided to pull it. I have reached out informally to the council chairperson just to let her know that we do have two attorneys' opinions that are not in alignment with the initial opinion from Sullivan Hayes and Quinn, and that is the extent of that. My intention is to forward these now public documents just as, you know, and she and/or the council can do as, as they may, as they choose. So I don't necessarily think that there is a need to draft a letter to the council beyond simply forwarding them these opinions and saying, hey, just so you know, we received these two opinions. That's my position now. So then to move on to the draft letter to Attorney Quinn, this is a draft. And I would like the permission of the committee to send some sort of letter to Attorney Quinn addressing this because I do believe that we should have been notified and we should have had some time to review. And I also believe that the opinion of Attorney Quinn didn't necessarily, it so dramatically impacted the council's vote and actions, which not only impacted the school's budget, but also impacted the entire city's budget. So yes, my feelings are captured in the draft. I want to motion first, and then we can talk about feedback. And Member Hollins?
I motion the school committee send a correspondence to Attorney Quinn about the differing legal opinions.
Okay. Is there a second? Second, my member Ekstrom. Did you want to speak to the motion and give your input?
Yeah. I can feel all of the emotion that went into this letter, but I, I would make these suggestions. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'm listening.
I would not include the first paragraph because I think when, you know, firms that have different clients, they don't write to anyone but the client. So I just think it raises an issue. I don't, I don't know what our standing is. I would say, on behalf of the Greenfield School Committee, I want to share the two opposing legal opinions. Then I go on to the second paragraph, to the legal opinion your office provided, to the city council, et cetera. Paragraph three, I would change to say, "It's our expectation when called upon to provide legal counsel to the school committee, your firm operates at all times with the best interests of the school committee in mind." I'd leave out the rest because I don't think we should be asking somebody to bend the law to, anyway, I just think it's fine to put a period after mind. And then instead of the last paragraph, I, I would eliminate the, what I feel is sort of a judgment and just say, "We are concerned about the differences of legal opinion, the differences of legal opinions as to the opinion from your office," because the opinion from your office was adverse to the interests of the school committee and appreciate your apply or something. I think he may have a reason for his opinion, but I would try to take out some of the, what feels like admonishment. There may be a good reason for whatever he did.
Member Ekstrom.
Can you expand a little bit on what it is, the reason behind our sending this letter other than you gave an opinion and we didn't know about it? I mean, what was the opinion given? What was it regarding? Just briefly, I'm not...
Yeah, sure. So we discussed this at the last meeting, hence the request for a second opinion from Attorney Smith. And the reason for drafting the letter, it's, there's two reasons. One is, there's a recommendation of Attorney Smith to draft a letter to Attorney Quinn because of concern that this legal opinion was given and it was, it directed the actions, it essentially directed the actions of the council, which had a really strong impact on the schools. It impacted how they deliberated, I'm sorry, excuse me, how they voted on the budget, how they deliberated about the budget. The actions that they took were in part based on the idea of the two-thirds being of the current body. And so my main concern is that this is something that negatively, it had a really dramatic impact on the Greenfield School Committee budget. And I believe that as their client, that we should be informed and as I state, that like our best interests should be kept in mind. And I'm not sure that it was in this instance. And it's concerning to me that we would have, you know, one, we have one attorney that's working on the interest of the city and one attorney, or and the same attorney that in theory is working for the best interest of the school committee, and there's a legal opinion that's been given that really dramatically impacted both. And, you know, we ended up with additional funding in our budget, but that came by taking from other departments in the city. And that action, my understanding of the action that was taken by the council is because they felt that that was the only way that they could get the amount of votes that they needed in order to satisfy the interpretation of the two-third vote requirement. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Can I just follow up quickly?
Yeah, absolutely.
So is what we're really... So is what we're really concerned about is that it's a conflict of interest?
Yes, yes, thank you for making it just very concise. Yes.
All right.
It's a potential conflict of interest.
Gotcha.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Couple of observations. Dealing with your letter first, the request for a city attorney's opinion was by the city clerk because they work with the city council. I authorized that opinion because it was important to us because we were trying to also monitor all the various advocacy hits the city councillors were taking. So I would correct your letter in that respect. You also mentioned that a sentence without even copying the committee and our superintendent. This letter purports to be sent to Quinn, copying the school committee members Jordana Harper and Stephen Namirko, and not copying the mayor or the city clerk. So you seem to be, you seem to be doing the same thing that you're accusing someone else of doing. Also, there is, I understand, I guess, the concept of conflict of interest, but you can't certainly prefer a legal opinion that's going to align with your particular position. So the legal opinion is the legal opinion. If you also provided Attorney Quinn's letter with the other two, then we would have probably looked at some cases that might have been the same or different. But often attorneys, that's how attorneys make their money, there's one on each side. That's how they do it. So there are going to be various opinions. I think, I think if there's a conflict of interest, we've got one in-house. We've got Attorney Peter Smith coming up with an opinion on the same subject, contrary to what the city solicitor and the school committee attorney has come up with. So we have a conflict within the school department with those two attorneys being utilized. And as I mentioned earlier, Attorney Smith has been the singular attorney for the school department in the past, and I suspect that option is coming up in the near future. But let me also mention my personal feelings. There is a levy limit, an excess levy, because we haven't been using all of the tax dollars every single year for the past eight years that we could have. That's why there's an excess levy. And to, I think it's a selfish position to grab all that excess money over that period of time for one year's operating budget for the school department. So there might be very enthusiastic advocates out there for taking all the money as possible, but the councillors knew the option. They knew that any penny above the budget submitted by the mayor was a surcharge on property tax owners, a surcharge on property tax and all property owners. I think that's the real reason why they didn't go in that direction, because you still needed the two-thirds vote, whether it was the term present and voting, or whether it was the seat on the city council of 13. So I don't, I don't support a letter. I support having Attorney Quinn come in here and explain his position, have Peter Smith come in and explain his position. So what's, let's see, you both came up with the same cases and came up with different opinions? So what's the real opinion? The fact is, the real opinion is the city charter, and that's where you have to go. So I'm not going to support a letter, but I'll support, call both attorneys in to speak with us.
Okay, I see, Member Johnson.
I guess I also share concerns about just sending a letter to a lawyer expressing our disappointment. That lawyer was doing a job that was tasked to them by the city. And I think that our problem is not necessarily with the attorney and the work that they did on behalf of the city, but the fact that the city or the clerk's office did not notify us that they were seeking this opinion. We might have been able to, as a, as the group that's charged with improving student achievement in Greenfield, to seek our own determination, as we had, as we had a chance to do after the fact, and have that included in the civic debate about how this was, the charter was going to be interpreted and whether this was a hard and fast rule that all lawyers agree on, or something where there is room for disagreement. And there clearly was, in that there have been three, three letters written, and two of them say that it's two-thirds of those voting and present. And I think the idea that those councillors would have made the exact same decisions, realizing that they had a lower threshold of votes for two-thirds voting and present versus including people who either were not even on the council or weren't able to attend that night, is ludicrous. Of course, it would have changed the way that they deliberated and the decisions that they made. So I guess I'm not, I'm interested in the idea of having the lawyers come and talk to us, so we can ask them hard questions and evaluate their work. I don't know if the letter's really all that helpful, but I also think that there's, I think we just, we also need to communicate to the city and the clerk's office that if there are going to be legal opinions made, that will substantially affect the interests of the students of Greenfield, that the school committee should be made aware of those at the time that they're happening and not when it's too late to weigh in with our own thoughts and interests.
Did I see any hands over here? Okay. Superintendent?
It's my understanding that the city clerk was away for some period of time. So I want to sort of assist in framing this conversation, that this is not finger pointing in any way at the council or the city clerk. I think the question is, the school committee passed a budget that was significantly different than the mayor's budget, and is different than the budget that we have today. And I think we're really looking to the future to clarify what are the guidelines around what the law and the charter says are allowable for the school committee advocating for the needs of the students in its district vis-à-vis setting the budget. And so I think the best hope to come out of this is not to chastise anybody, but to get very clear, I think, an interpretation, and my sort of humorous comment here is, there's three opinions, two of them agree. We have two out of three opinions about two-thirds. I don't know, the sort of math teacher in me thinks this is humorous. But this, but the fact that we have three legal opinions on two-thirds shows why you need math teachers more than anything. Anyway, so I also have favorite jokes about, you know, other arithmetic subjects, so I'll leave that. The point is, you know, like, why was six afraid of seven? Okay. So this is, it is a serious matter. It has a lot of significance to the budget and how funding for our district, which we spent hours tonight talking about the budget and whether we're adhering to policies, and the value of this is hundreds of thousands of dollars, potentially. And it doesn't matter this year, just this year, it matters every year forever. So having an opinion on record that clarifies what, maybe it wouldn't have made any difference this year, but maybe next year it matters. And this is clarifying the law and the committee's power. So for those reasons, I really encourage that we take this opportunity to just set clearly what the bounds are and what can be done that's within the school committee's authority. And I do think it would be challenging for any law firm to ably serve both of these purposes. And in this case, a firm is serving the council and the executive branch and the school committee. And those positions are sometimes very closely aligned, and sometimes they're farther apart. And this is an instance where I think you can see clearly that a different interpretation could have resulted in a very different outcome for our students.
Mayor Martin?
Thank you. Just quickly, I agree with the superintendent. We found a number of light ink spaces within the city charter that need to be clarified, verified, rewritten. And I believe the council is in the process of identifying the most critical ones at this point. This one should be added, certainly. But the other question would, you might ask, did it matter? Was it, would it matter? So, I mean, we had, we had 13 councillors, one was, had resigned, so that left 12 acting councillors. Two weren't there, that left 10 councillors present. Two-thirds is seven. And there was no way that there was going to be seven votes for not only overriding the mayor's budget, but for a number of capital items which were tabled and will be brought up next week. So you didn't have that vote anyways. That's why all the capital items were tabled. So I'm thinking a numerical clarification, since we number the city attorneys, I mean, geez, we don't want 13 city attorneys. When we number the city council members as 13, we should have the ability to number the number of councillors that are needed in certain aspects of appropriations. And I think that would be part of the rewrite. So I don't, as I said before, I'd like to bring them both in and ask them their opinion.
Okay. Yes.
Can I clarify? Are you recommending, Mayor, a charter change to specify the threshold of votes required and suggesting that a particular type of vote, for example, a capital vote or something else, might in fact require a two-thirds vote of the full committee? I think one thing that all three legal opinions agree on is that if it says of the full committee or of the fixed committee, then that's very clearly of the full committee or of the fixed committee, in which case it would be of 13 councillors, you need two-thirds of the 13. Is that, I'm just clarifying.
Yes, pretty much, pretty much that. So there's language modifications that need to take place. Every year ending in a zero, you have to review the charter. Zero's coming up in January. So they are preparing now for charter changes, the council is. In addition, there are, there is litigation at the same time attacking the charter as to being irrelevant and uncertain points. So the council is going to have to address that probably sooner than 2020. So I'm just saying, this can be part of it.
Thank you. Member Johnson?
Okay, so it sounds like going forward, the charter can be amended to make things more clear, and there will be all kinds of interesting debates about that perhaps, or maybe it will be just technical. But the other question of the council and the conflict of interest, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how effective a letter is, but it does seem like there is something important that needs to happen regarding that. And I'm wondering if people have ideas about how we go about who will agree that there does seem to be a conflict of interest issue there. What do you see as possible solutions?
So before we go into any of that and potentially the next agenda item, which could be related, we do have a motion on the table. Susan, I think it's a pretty simple one.
What's not clear to me, Member Hollins had suggested revisions, and I don't know whether they were accepted into the letter or not.
They weren't part of the motion, though.
It was just part of the deliberation, and they weren't necessarily put forward as specific amendments to the motion.
Okay. I didn't know if the motion would say as amended, the correspondence as amended.
What is the motion right now?
Is that the school committee send the correspondence to Attorney Quinn about the differing legal opinion.
Send a correspondence? I don't think I asked that this one be sent.
I heard it the same way.
Okay.
Send.
Send a correspondence to Attorney Quinn about the differing legal opinion.
Okay. I know, I don't either. I want to wrap this up. I do think that there is a need for a conversation with our attorneys, and I do think that we need to call attention to this, because it did impact the schools, and it will potentially impact the schools and the city moving forward. So it sounds like there is a little bit of consensus that we're all interested in finding some clarity for really the benefit of the entire community. That's what I'm hearing from a lot of voices. Yes, Member Ekstrom?
I do want to mention, when we first talked about, well, not first talked about, when we spoke about what attorneys we would like to use for the school committee, we did have a discussion about using the same attorney that the city was using, excuse me, and that we had some concerns that there would essentially be something like this. And so I guess I'm just, this, part of me thinks that this is fool me once, fool me twice.
Okay. So. So let's, for right now, keep the conversation related to the draft letter motion. Okay, send a correspondence. The motion is to send a correspondence to Attorney Quinn. Say it again.
About the differing legal opinion.
Okay. Is there any further deliberation on that? Okay. Yes.
Is, is part of the intent to include the two legal opinions provided with the correspondence?
So I think that I would put forward an amendment to the motion to include the additional, the two opinions in the correspondence and request a meeting with both of our attorneys related to this topic. I sighed because I'm thinking about policy section D and all of our priorities.
Point of order.
Okay, so, yes, yeah, I put forward this amendment. Who, did I?
I made the motion, point of order, so it's not a friendly amendment, or I won't accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
It needs much more discussion.
Okay.
I would only comment that, that we are discussing this as a full committee, when we weren't discussing it as a full committee, when we asked these different two attorneys to make any, make any opinion.
Yes, we were. Yes, we were. It was at a full committee meeting.
The school committee did?
Yes.
Was I not there?
You were not there.
Yes, I was not there.
Right. But the motion was made by Member Hollins, right?
I'll accept.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
I'll accept a friendly amendment to include the two additional legal opinions, but I think follow-up meetings is a different issue.
Okay. And who was the second?
Member Ekstrom.
Okay. Okay.
I made that motion. I agree, I agree.
Okay. Yes, the motion is to send a correspondence to Attorney Quinn to include the opinion from Attorney Smith and Attorney Long. Is that accurate, Susan? It's slightly different language, but.
That's it.
Okay. Okay, let's, can we vote?
Call the question.
How do we feel? Let's vote. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that a reluctant aye? Great. So I think that was unanimous. Here's what I can do. I appreciate Member Hollins's input. I also wrote down input from Mayor Martin. I think at the heart of this is to take out some of the emotion and judgment and express some concern, and make Attorney Quinn aware of these other two opinions, and then ask for an explanation. I'm seeing some yeses. Is that your interpretation? Is that your understanding on this side? Okay. Superintendent?
I think that leaves out a significant component of what's in this letter now. A motion aside, there's, there's two different components. One is the legal opinion, and the other is not notifying the committee of the impact of the opinion. And the discussion I heard earlier-
And the discussion I heard earlier was that, you know, an attorney provides counsel to the person they're representing and therefore has no obligation to another one. But, inherent is that is, if that is a conflict, then the committee needs to consider that. And in this case, a decision was rendered that had clear impact to the committee, and no notice was provided. Therefore, their, their function was to represent the town. And I do think that that, if you leave that out, there, there's a significant portion of that communication that is not getting related.
Yeah. I mean, I agree with that, hence the initial draft. So, yes, I'm seeing Glenn, and then I'm seeing Bill, Mayor, or Mayor Johnson.
Oh. Got a ring to it.
Thank you.
My understanding is that the, the letter, that the motion was pretty, pretty broad in terms of giving you discretion on what you communicated, and I think that, I don't feel a need to get into additional motions to confine or restrict you, and appreciate your taking the feedback of the superintendent or others before you write the letter.
Okay. Mayor Martin?
Move the agenda.
Okay. Great. I'll write a letter. Thank you for your feedback. Okay, the next one is pretty quick. Open meeting law complaint, follow-up. I just included a simple email correspondence that I had with the Attorney General's office. This is in part to clarify that what was suggested in the recorder is not entirely accurate. It's my understanding that the attorney, that the mayor's office did communicate with the Attorney General's office requesting to host an open meeting law training. However, it's my understanding that that has not necessarily been granted to the city of Greenfield, and states here in the mayor, or in the email, "We will likely be scheduling our trainings in July or August, and will be back in touch with the mayor's office if Greenfield is selected for a training." So, I just wanted to just like call attention to that. And I also think it's pretty cool because I had already sent an email to them earlier in the day. Then I got a request from another member. Then I got this response back. So, it seems like we were all sort of on the same page to kind of put forward this request. The other thing that you need to know is that I have an, an open letter that I just received today from the Attorney General's office. I will check it out. My understanding is that we have been assigned, that Mr. Giblann, who filed the complaint, was not satisfied with our response, and we have been assigned, the case has been assigned to an attorney at the Attorney General's office. And I have an email thread that I will forward to you all after the meeting. And in the email thread, you'll see that they state that there's no action that we need to take at this time. The other thing that's relevant to the open meeting law training is that I'm trying to schedule a training with the MASCE. I've had a little back and forth. I did reach out to the Mass Municipal Association. They referred me to the online trainings and said that they didn't offer trainings for open meeting law. And then also, charting the course, will be coming to Northampton, the Collaborative for Educational Services, in September. The superintendent received that information, I think, just today or yesterday, so I will forward it to you guys, it's September 7th. So, if folks want to attend that training, they can. And that's that. So, it's very clear, it's cut and dry, requires no vote or deliberation. I'll check this out and let you guys know about it when I have a chance to open it and read it. The next item is review of legal services. This is here because, you know, it's our, it's in our policy, and it's in, what's in our policy, the intent to review our legal services around the time of the budget. I did notice on the budget subcommittee agenda that this appeared. I don't think it ever received any deliberation. I was surprised to see it. But, that's aside, that's not relevant. So, anyway, this is something that is coming to the table. It is quite timely, given the legal opinions that we have just discussed. And, my intention here is to request some support from some of the committee membership. I am specifically requesting the support of Member Johnson to review and propose a process that is a fair, clear process for how we actually review our legal services. This is something that is meant to be done annually. We attempted this, I think, last year or the year before, and the process ended up in subcommittee and didn't really go beyond that. And it was a little uncomfortable, to say the least. So, I think that the committee really needs a process that's very clear and that we can all agree on, and that everyone has the opportunity to weigh in on. And, I think that Member Johnson has something to offer in this regard. So, I don't know, so I'm asking for the committee's support to request that Member Johnson propose a process for review of legal services to bring back to the committee at the July meeting, and then we can kind of go from there. And that's a motion. Except for the, kind of go from there. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Member Exstrom. Member Hollins?
I don't know who on the committee was here at the time, but there was a separate meeting of this school committee with Attorney Smith present and Attorney Quinn present. It's when Nate Smith, it's relatively recent. Both attorneys were there. We worked out a template for attorney services that both attorneys agreed to, the school committee agreed to. And then, each, after that, each attorney submitted their own guidance on what, what, they agreed on what services they would provide. If Member Johnson is going to have this role, I would recommend that we find the minutes of that meeting and the minutes that, and the documents for the template for attorney services, and then what each contract with each attorney is in place because they had agreed, and they even agreed on what they would do if there was a disagreement on conflict of interest or assignment. So, there's a body of information, I think, that should go to Mr. Johnson, and we should all know that there was a meeting with both these attorneys working out how this would work, and that they have different contracts, and there was a template for attorney services, no matter who it would be.
Yeah. I mean, just to summarize, yes, we did have a contract negotiation with both of our attorneys, and we agreed to employ both of them, and I agree that all of that information should be provided, and is all public information. Any other discussion? Okay. Glenn, did you want to comment on it at all?
I can just say, you know, I really welcome people's input on this and any information people want to share with me without deliberating, but my basic thought was that first, it seems like important for us to have a statement of what our needs are with regards to counsel, and then we can evaluate counsel based on the needs that we've identified. So, that's kind of the rough outlines of what I'm thinking about in terms of what I'll be fleshing out a little bit more for you in time for the July meeting, but that's where I'm headed right now, so...
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you, Glenn. We'll get you that information and look forward to July. So, the last two items are pretty quick. Member Ward requested to have office hours with students, and there were some concerns related to liability and policy contractual issues, et cetera, and also accessibility and what that would actually mean, and boundaries of the school committee, et cetera. So, this is kind of a two-part question. Obviously, Member Ward isn't here, so we can't speak to his request. I think that if, the one question is, does the committee want to even consider this? And then, the second part of that question would be, if the committee does want to consider some kind of office hours, as was suggested, I believe that we need to refer that to counsel for a review. And to be clear, I actually think that we should just drop this and not follow up on it and not refer this to counsel, and just not try to attempt to have office hours with students. That's my position. Member Johnson?
I move to table this agenda item indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Member Exstrom. Any, I don't know if deliberation is...
Can you talk?
I don't think so. Tabling indefinitely is not debatable?
No.
Let's vote. All those in, all those in favor of tabling indefinitely?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
One oppose any abstention. One abstention. Okay. So, motion to table indefinitely passes. Okay. And then, the next part is the full of the subcommittee. Attorney Smith requested that the policy subcommittee, well, that the committee review the policy on bullying, and has some specific input related to that. And so, I am formally referring to subcommittee, the policy on bullying. This would come up naturally, but I think it should, you know, come forward. Thank you. Yes.
Do you happen to know the policy letter that is, or what?
You know, I'm very sorry, but I don't.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to be able to quickly...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I can look it up, I know.
Okay. So, that's moved by Mayor Martin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Member Johnson. Any conversation? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. That's unanimous. So, at this point, we do need to enter into executive session. We have a couple of items that we need to attend to. Let me double-check this.
No discussion of referral to subcommittee except what you mentioned?
That was my intent, was that the, there was the referrals to subcommittee was the one that I had. Is there...
Well, how, how do we ever share what we think should be discussed if it's not on the agenda, sort of?
I will take that into consideration and come back with something, okay? Because I've tried multiple different, multiple ways to address this and feel flooded. And we have so many priorities, and then I hear feedback that there's trust in me to prioritize, and there's not enough time, and all the things. So, right now, I think that we need to move on to executive session, and I will consider. Maybe we will add it back onto the agenda. Yes, Superintendent?
Just to make a note, the last agenda item was sent via email to the full committee, and the chair has just addressed it, and the committee has taken action on it. So, you can send agenda topics without any deliberation or comment or opinion to the full committee, and the chair will see them and then can...
Or to me.
Or to the chair. And the committee, the chair can add it to the agenda per the policy.
So, I move to enter into executive session for MGLC 30A 21, section two, three, and 10. Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And ten, to discuss trade secrets or confidential competitively sensitive or other proprietary information provided. This is in regards to an item related to the superintendent's contract, Unit A and a transportation contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Member Exstrom. Can we have a roll call?
Number Exstrom? I mean, yes, me. Number Karen?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
And Hollins?
Yes. Okay, so, we are now in executive session.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank. Visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
You're watching GCTV, Community Access Table Channel 15, in Greenfield, Massachusetts.